Good evening and welcome to the Georgetown School Committee meeting of Thursday, December 18th, 2014. If we could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we would like to approve the consent agenda, the share and entertain a motion to approve regular session minutes of November 20th, 2014, and regular session minutes of December 4th, 2014.
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Good evening, Vanessa.
Hi.
How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good.
Just recently, the chorus and a few chorus kids and some acapella kids got to sing for the superintendent breakfast and we actually did awesome.
It was unbelievable. They did such a great job.
Thank you. We're also getting ready, we're gonna sing for Tressle Way on Saturday. We were auctioned off at the Music Parents Auction, so that'll be exciting, a good group of us are going.
I hope it brought in some good money.
Yeah. And also, I don't know if you heard, but Teddy got his lighting grant, so he's super excited.
Well, he got the one from the GEF. The GEF gave him $10,000.
That's awesome.
That's a lot.
He's been like dancing around.
Oh, good for him.
He's pretty excited.
Good for him.
Yep. And also, to get excited for our break that's coming up, we're gonna have a holiday spirit day, so the grade with, it's, we're gonna run it kind of like pep rally in a way, the grade with the most holiday spirit that dresses up, they'll get $50 towards their treasury account, so that'll be fun, just a good way to kick off and get excited for a break.
When will that be, Vanessa?
On Tuesday.
On Tuesday?
Yep. And also, our sport, our winter sports have started this past week, and they've all had their first games, so they have done mostly well, so we'll help improve as well.
That's good. Everybody excited that the parking lot is open?
Yeah, all the seniors are down there.
Did it get painted too?
They got repainted. In the spring, that's, well, in the, one of the jobs that they have to do in the spring, they just ran out of time, was to skim, skim coat, they called skim coat, and then they're gonna paint lines.
Right, I just, when we were there the other night for the concert, I thought, oh, these lines look pretty.
They're temporary lines that they painted.
Oh, that's temporary, okay. Oh, cut down.
It looks good. Yeah, it looks good. The kids must have been excited though.
They get there at 7:00 AM, 'cause it's whoever gets there first, so we're like rushing down.
Oh, that's right, that's a good way to get out of bed.
Well, that's a good incentive not to be late, right?
No, that's good. And the concerts, they were great.
Yeah, our concerts this past week have been really good.
Yeah, they were really good, like, last night I went to one, and it's just amazing how good the kids are, and they just look so proud to be up there. It's, it's really great, I commend band and the chorus people, they do do a great job.
You know, I spoke to Laura about doing it, I said to her, I just, we just need a, a small group, because, you know, there's really not that much space, but a small group would be great, and she said, okay, okay, and then she, she called them one to know what the account number was for the bus. I said, the bus, okay, wait a minute here, just a small group, right? So there were 32 of them, and they were amazing. It was, so, you know, it was the seniors, senior choral people.
Senior choral, in choral, and then the acapella group.
Right, but you figure, they have 75 kids that are in chorus, so, you know, 30, 30 kids is not that big a group.
That's a small group, right?
I did actually mention to Mr. Terry last night when I saw him, that I wanted to have maybe the acapella group come to a meeting in March.
Oh, that'd be great.
So, he said that we could, we could talk about it, but I just think that would be nice to have them come.
That's a cool idea.
That's a great idea.
So, we'll talk more about that.
No, they were great, very proud, we were all very proud.
Yeah, that's good. Thank you. Okay, is there anyone here in the audience that would like to talk about anything on the agenda? We have, we have Fire Chief Beardsley here.
Good evening, Chief.
Thank you for coming.
Hi, thank you, thank you for having me over.
This is an interesting request.
It's Carol, just, I don't know if you folks have gotten, got into like three conferences there. But what we're looking at, what we're looking at doing is with the destruction of the Pembroke School, what we're looking to do is request use for the Fire Department to use it for training before it's demolished, of course, after the, after everybody leaves for the, for the spring, but we're looking at using it for our training. And you can see some of the items that we have, that we wanna take care of in there, we wouldn't be burning the building, because that just would be a little, a little too much, but we have other means by which we can create artificial smoke and such that is non-toxic, you know, not harmful and anything, but it helps, helps create the kind of an atmosphere that we work in when it comes to fighting a fire. And a building like that is just absolutely, it's, it's layout is perfect for us for search and rescue, forcible entry, all those different functions that we have to do on the fire ground. So what, what we're looking to do is get permission to go ahead and use it from the time that it's vacated until the time that it's gonna be, you know, the wrecking ball hits it.
I know, so what is that timeframe?
I think they said that from the, Mike, you can help me with this, I think they said from the, from the last day of school to when they're talking about demolishing it is a week.
Oh, wow.
I think it's a, it's a short window.
It's a real, yeah, it's a short window.
Yeah.
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 So it's a short window. And then if we have snow days.
Yeah, it gets smaller if we have snow days.
I know, unfortunately. Seventeen.
About seventeen.
Yeah. Yeah, so, it's a win, it's a short window.
Because we would need time to take out all the things we're gonna keep.
Yes.
Yeah.
Even with a one-week period of time, just, you know, something that gives us an opportunity to get in there.
A period can empty out like one wing, and they can stop in that one wing.
Right.
Yeah, even that would be great for us.
Yeah, if you approve it, we'll make it work with the chief.
And how many people will be, you know, participating in it?
We probably would be looking anywhere between as small a group as 20 and as, as big as maybe 50, 'cause if we can do some of the functions that we'd like to do, we would bring in some of our neighboring fire departments like Groveland and Byfield and such, who would be normally in here if we had a serious incident in town, to come in and work with us. It's a good, it's a good team-building time for us also, when we do something like this.
When you do something like that, do you let, like, the betters or people in the neighborhood know what's going on so that there isn't a lot of concern?
If it's something, yeah, if it's something serious where, you know, we're gonna be with an eyeball shot of people, but, you know, where the, where the school is set back like that, I mean, we're not, we're not coming in, you know, with sirens and everything like that, we're just, we're gonna set up, do our operations and, you know, leave at the end of the evening.
No, it sounds like a great idea. I know a couple of years ago, the police used the Pembroke.
Pembroke Training.
And that, you know, it is, it's a, it's a great location for that, and what better way to say goodbye.
It was a high school too, Ed.
We, yeah, we, yeah, we've used just about all the schools since I've been here.
Oh, really? It's usually done on vacation or, or a weekend, but they do bring all the other departments in too, so it's not just benefiting the Georgetown Fire Department, it's really good regionally. And you've attended trainings in other places that they've done it too, so.
Yes.
I know Chief Cudmore's had the same experience.
Yeah, we're just back in.
It's nice they have a network.
We were in Beverly, a year ago, at this time, you know, we used one of their, a school that had been, I can't remember what the name of the school was now, it was off McKay Street.
It's McKay School.
Oh, McKay School, yeah.
Yeah, and we, we used that for a couple of months, for training.
And do you know, have you spoken to Chief Cudmore about this?
I think, I think the chief is aware of it, I don't know that you set it up formally with him, but.
We, no, we haven't said.
I mean, I'm just wondering if he might like to hold a drill of his own, or if you and he come, you know, to an understanding and.
Yeah.
First come, first served.
Right. No, there is definitely no, they were very close.
Yeah, he and I worked, worked very closely together.
Really?
I don't know if he'd wanna, it'd be tough kinda mingling in, you know, in what we wanna do on this particular case.
Right. Totally different stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, I think it's great. Any other questions? Okay, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the request from Fire Chief Al Beardsley to use the Pembroke School in June 2015 for the purpose of conducting training. Second? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for coming, we'll work with you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
I, I hope that there's no snow days and you can get right in there on.
We all do, for more than just one reason.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, good night.
Have a good night.
Okay, the use of the Pembroke School, we have the.
The Pearly, Pearly?
Oh, yeah, that's Vanessa, yeah, the Pearly, for a senior center discussion, we have Mike Farrell.
Colleen.
Wanna come on up?
Yeah, come on up, Colleen.
And we have, Gary, you coming too, or are you just? Colleen Ranshaw Fiorello. Feel free to come up, feel free to come up.
More the merrier. Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, Colleen. I'm Colleen Ranshaw Fiorello, and I'm the Council on Aging Director here in Georgetown, and this is my chair, Janine Deschard, and Janine asked her to, to join us to represent our board. I brought you, I know I'd already, you've probably received the packets that I had, or the, you know, the narrative that I had written and sent before, but I made another packet. This includes our annual report, our December newsletter, and it also includes a graph that I pulled out from my budget presentation that shows our current growth and our projected growth, so.
Great, that's great.
Just be right there, hopefully I've got enough.
Tell them what the name of your newsletter is, Colleen, I love it.
A Few Gray Hairs.
A Few Gray Hairs. Yeah, we, we can share too, come in if we need to.
Have I gotten around to you?
Yep.
Yeah, you're good.
Mike, do you have?
Oh, there's another.
Okay, if you have one more, we'll take it.
There's one more.
We could have our own.
Yeah.
If I could just say something first, I'm here primarily for moral support, but to put this in perspective, the services and the number of people that the Council on Aging Services is, I think, more than the students that use as a board service. And unlike, this is the one population in the town that is increasing, and it's gonna continue to increase for quite a while, as long as baby boomers are still alive. So, this, this is a tremendous need in the town. Colleen and her staff and her board have been doing a tremendous job in providing a lot of these services, and they provide them all over the town. Colleen is running.
Out of her Subaru.
The day, you know, from the beginning of the day to the end of the day, I get tired watching, she's that busy. And an opportunity like this to consolidate all these services and try to create a one-stop-shop has been thought about for many years, and, you know, we talked about building one, building a senior center, and that, that would be a tremendous thing, but it's also be a tremendous cost. And this is a very opportune time, and, you know, Colleen's given it a lot of thought over the years, and how she thinks she can best service her expanding clientele, and I think she's, she's got a good plan, and I'll take it away, Colleen.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate that. No, thank you for asking us to come in, and thank you for your willingness to consider, you know, using a portion of the Pearly School for elder services, and I've appreciated Carol's support all along, and she's.
We've been working on this for a bit of time.
We have been what, yeah.
But there was no space, now, when, when Pembroke came about, and we were gonna consolidate the grade, make change of grade configuration, we started saying, wow, wouldn't it be great if we could look at this?
It became, it certainly became the opportunity for us to really give it some serious consideration. You know, I've been here for eight years, and during that time, we've looked at other pieces of property as it became available in town, and, you know, developed criteria just from there, of, you know, the selectman would say, you know, said to me, look at this piece that's becoming available, and just tell us what you think. And so in terms, as you do that, you, that's how you develop criteria that helps you rank opportunities, and so, looking at that criteria, we knew that the school is in an ideal location, it's, it's close to the Village Center, it's handicap accessible, it does have parking, it, you know, it has some space for expansion of programs, and those are the things that you look at in terms of a facility being successful for an elder population. I knew that from, from looking at the other pieces of property, from talking to the State Program Manager at Executive Office of Elder Affairs, you know, certainly from looking at other senior centers as they exist, you know, around us in the surrounding area, and, you know, so in the time, I mean, as I arrived, I mean, certainly my focus wasn't on, we don't have a facility, my focus was on developing programs and services to serve, and the superintendent that I knew had said years back, you know, walls don't teach, walls don't teach, I was at another building project, but, but it was very true, I mean, we, we got here, I said, the lack of walls, you know, wasn't gonna hamper us from developing a program and services, and we now, we have well over 30 programs and services that we offer, and we offer them in a variety of locations. My office is here at Town Hall, and we do, we do a number of programs right out of Town Hall, I mean, any of the counseling programs, the transportation coordination, we'll have activities that I'm using a conference room for, and some of those activities might be a large group activity, but it might be, it might be our Shine Counselor who is working with health insurance counseling, or we've had health education, and I've had elder services providing the balance program, our diabetes management program, where I had a group, and then I had one-on-one people who needed counseling, and so we were, we use space, you know, wherever it is, sometimes we've ranged downstairs in the basement, and sometimes on the second floor, and sometimes we've been up here, and our office is busy, people are in and out seeking information, or, you know, meeting with us for one, you know, piece or another. We do a tremendous amount of case management, case management has grown tremendously since we've been here, and there, there was a graph that I included in there, and that includes, you know, folks that need assistance with food resources or fuel resources, we work very closely with police and fire, we have people that are living with protective issues. That has grown tremendously, you know, I had, so, and, and then at the, I'm losing, I don't wanna lose track of telling you, I can tell you more, you know, anything you wanna know, just ask me, it's all here. But our, and we use, we rent space at the church, at the First Congregational Church, which has been very welcoming to us as well, and that houses our congregate meal site three mornings a week, and the congregate meal site, you know, allows us then to have a nutritious program for people. It is, for many people, the main meal of the day, and it's that opportunity to eat with others, and if you eat with others, you're going to be, you're gonna be better in terms of your, your physical health and your social health. So, I began to do more programs before lunch, so, you know, you know, come for the program, stay for lunch, you know, and, and that's, that's helped things grow in that setting. The Housing Authority was very accommodating to us and allowed us to use, you know, Tressle Way's community room for our, our exercise-based programs, which then allowed us to be able to do, I moved strength training and yoga there, so we have, something happens there every day, but that way, there's my large group meeting room, so I can have something happen at Tressle Way, at the same time, something is happening at the church, at the same time, things are happening in our office. The men's breakfast program takes place at Tressle Way once a month, triad programs take place, we gather together for our, you know, holiday parties and other events, we had, you know, 70 people in the community room last week for the holiday party.
That was great, that was a nice event.
Yes, I was very glad you could come.
Very well attended.
Very well, yeah.
Just, just a great event.
So, but meanwhile, in order, I mean, in order to do that, you know, be, you know, everything that was purchased for that party was purchased and came back here and went into the refrigerator and into my, my office, and then we actually have a picture of me loading the elevator to go back out, because it was, you know, the piles and the boxes were that large, then they went into the Subaru, then they went to Tressle Way, set up for the party, you know, because everything requires, everything, you know, we do, we, we set up everything and then we take everything down, even at the church, every Monday morning I'm setting up, and then Wednesday afternoon I take down. Every event that's happened at Tressle Way is set up and broken down, but, and then it all had to come back here again. So, you know, and that's just, that's just how we, you know, how we work. But, and so that was, I mean, so we have expanded on the model that we had, but, I mean, essentially, the model that we have, the space at Town Hall, you know, the rented space at the church was, was established, you know, over 20 years ago, and, you know, it worked at that time, but the numbers have changed, and certainly, you know, we've seen large growth in terms of attendance, but also, you know, as I said, the, you know, the number of people that we've worked with are, you know, so we talk about the duplicated individual and the unduplicated individual, and the unduplicated individual is the person that you serve the first time, the first time that you see them, they're unduplicated, as you continue to serve them, they become duplicated, and those numbers have grown tremendously in terms of duplication. But the projections for growth are, are very solid here, I mean, and it's not, you know, our proj, our build-out is, for Georgetown, isn't as startling as what our, our growth is for the aging population, and as Mike said, that's because we are, we are aging, you know, the baby boomers have arrived, and that's the bulge, and, you know, people are seeking to age in place, which is, you know, it's a better model certainly than, than it had been, and it's, you know, less cost to the individuals, less, as well as less cost to society, and people, you know, people do well in that model, but it does mean that you do need to provide programs and services in place, and these folks will ask for more programs and services, and they deserve that. So, you know, that is, that's really what's brought us to this position, it's been, and it, what's brought us forward has been success, you know, it has been successful for us to be here and to work the way that we've worked, and that's why we're now in a, in a position ready to, to do more. And, you know, and I think, again, the town is a healthy town, it's a welcoming town, it's been very supportive of our programs and services, you know, and so this is another, you know, this is another aspect of maintaining wellness as a community, you know, to show, you know, that concern and care for all demographics, and it's here, I know it's here. But certainly, I think we would gain inefficiency and effectiveness, I think it would just, you know, the, you know, the loading and unloading of the, you know, the WB Mason Box supply that I keep in the office so that I keep loading things up, is not the most efficient way to continue to do business. I, I know that, you know, once in place, you then have that opportunity, you know, you have the, you have the opportunity to have small group activities happening at the same time the large group activities are happening, and the people will have the, you know, the opportunity to come in, in the morning, spend the time that they might, if they might wanna play cards, or, or sit in the library and read, or to, you know, to do some exercise on it, you know, I'd love to be able to set up an exercise room so people can exercise independently, and then stay for lunch, you know, you gain, you know, you gain that flow of people, and that brings you into more relationship with each other, and, and, and that's, you know, that's what opens the doors to other, other services. I mean, I, you know, our men's breakfast program, when I started the men's breakfast program, I used to ask the meats and ins guys to have a minute sit, so I'd have at least four people around the table, and we have, we have a lot more than that that attend on a regular basis, but that way, it was, you know, we, you know, we'll serve over 20, 21, 22 people or more at a breakfast, but then you have that opportunity to know them, they come for the breakfast, and you have that opportunity to know and say, what are the other services that I can provide? What else does this population need? And that wasn't a very underserved population, so that opened the door, that men's breakfast opened the door. You know, then our brown bag program, again, we had, I think five, we were delivering five bags, and we deliver to over 35 people now, and that opened the door to other significant services.
I guess, you know, what's going through, as I'm listening to you speak, I'm, I'm trying to figure out how this one building can meet both your needs and our needs. I'm not, I'm not sure that it can, and so what I.
It can. We're gonna talk about that. First, you're gonna hear Colleen's little pitch here, and then, then we're gonna have a chance to talk about the map that's in here.
I've looked at it, but I'm, I mean, I'm, just based on what you're telling me, and I don't know if you've seen this map.
I haven't.
No, she hasn't.
That. We, we, we are in a position of needing space, and I, I'm concerned as we move forward, I'm concerned looking at 2020 and 2030, you know, in this, the person that's now in this position, I, I, I'm concerned for the person that will be here in 2020 and 2030, and, you know, I don't want the town to be looking back and saying we missed an opportunity. This population deserves that.
It's a miracle you've been working as well as you have.
Thank you.
Offering as many services as you have, I'm just in awe, listening.
Lucky to have her on the guest.
I, I know, you know, I feel like we should do the best that we can.
And we're very, and we're very lucky that we can do intergenerational kinds of things.
We have.
And we have been doing those right along, but there, now there's a greater opportunity because you physically, and we, but yet we can keep the, the seniors completely separate from the preschool because of the way the hallways work and the, the doors, so it, it's possible to, to have integration when we want it and separation when we want it, you know?
I mean, there is a real need to be able to, I, I need to be able to have, let's say, I, we need to be able to have programs happen simultaneously, it have, you know, we do need to, you know, that's just literally why we have large group programs happening at the same time across town, but they need to be brought together, I mean, and there is always the opportunity to be able to, you know, to share space, but, you know, to be, there are things that I, we do need to be able to do, we do need to be able to have a food pantry in place, I do need to be able to have space for confidential counseling so that my Shine Counselor or my clinician is not sitting in a hall without any partitions around, working with, which is what has to happen now.
No, that won't.
That, you know, I mean, things have just changed, you know, and, I mean, that was, you know, that worked at that point, but our society's changed and the needs have changed. I was thinking today, Medicare open enrollment period has been, was the busiest open enrollment period I've ever seen, and the Shine Counselor and I both were meeting on a regular basis with people, and some of that work, I realize, has changed because Medicare.gov, now we can do some of the formulary work right online, you know, we're right online with Medicare.gov gathering that information. Well, when I started, that wasn't the case, we were sitting with a book in front of us and looking at programs and plans, so even just that, I mean, our, our income tax preparation program that we doubled last year, absolutely doubled the number of people we were serving, and we were filing right online with the IRS, so it's, you know, some of the, some of, just where we are, society has brought us to more, and certainly people are experiencing more difficulties, which is why I'm seeing the, you know, the, you know, the challenges in terms of managing their costs and needing to look enough, we, you know, need to look at what opportunity is or can I, you know, if you're having some problems financially, can we look at the SNAP program, can we look at some of the other food resources, can I help you with fuel assistance, can we maybe find a program that will pay for your Medicare Part B program or premium? You know, it's, you know, where we are as a society has really increased those challenges for folks. And then we have the issue in terms of socialization, you know, people need the opportunity to gather, and, and, you know, we do, you know, we'll spend time, you know, you know, going to people's homes for home visits if need be, but I need to be able to see people, you know, come to us too, they need to be able to be part of a group, and they need to be in a relationship with each other, and that's where the spaces would be used, you know, programs would happen, private space would be available, available, small group space, because sometimes you need somebody just to be able to come in and sit down and, and read, they, they need to be in a place with others and sit and read, or they maybe want to work on, you know, a craft project, I mean, I, Monday mornings I'm pulling out the craftings and then putting them back away again, but then, so then, that's therapeutic, that opportunity then isn't available, again, during that week because it's all put away.
So when you say on here that you have a van driver.
We do have a van driver.
So, does that mean, like, if.
We have a van.
So, so if someone needs to come here, do they have to provide their own transportation or with that van driver?
Well, it, it, that depends, I mean, I only have a van driver two mornings a week currently, and that, that's the salary that we have, so those two mornings, I mean, and we looked at that, we looked at that very closely about how to best use the van, the van is a wonderful opportunity, leased at the MVRTA.
The Merrimack Valley Planning Commission?
No, the Merrimack Valley Regional Transit Authority, I wrote a grant, that, then it was a district-wide grant, and we were able to lease our van through the transit authority for a dollar a year. So, the best way for us to use that van is to take a group of people out, you know, or as opposed to taking one person to the doctors and sitting there for four hours there. So, we, but however, we do also do medical transportation with the van, if, if I can So, we, but however, we do also do medical transportation with the van if, if I can fit it into the time that I have, the driver. Otherwise, we also use our, our volunteer. We have medical drivers that will drive people to doctors. And we use the ring and ride program through the M V R T A is very successful for folks. And thank, thankfully, due to the contract that we have with the town, it's completely free to Georgetown residents of all ages. And they're very accommodating to us. So, with twenty-four hour notice. And we have, you know, they will take people with, they have a large catchment area now, but for shopping, to go to, you know, the bank, you know. And we've used ring and ride to bring people to, to the church for, or to town hall actually recently. Had somebody come in that way and, you know, so that, also for medical appointments. So, I'll use whatever we've got available.
So, when you have like the holiday parties though, do, can, can people come that way or no?
They can use ring and ride at any point. That's available. But I only have my, my, my van program Tuesday and Thursday morning.
It's not a lot?
It's not a lot. We're hoping to increase it. And certainly that's part of, of what I wrote in terms of our, my budget proposal if we were to move forward. That would be one of the pieces I'd wanna increase. I mean, you know, so we're looking at the options. I mean, you know, so ring and ride, I mean, our, our use of ring and ride has grown incrementally over the last eight years. Because when people call me and look for transportation options, I'm laying it all out.
Right. So, but it's, I mean, to me, all, all these questions have to do with, you know, it cuts to the core of the best kind of community you can have. That takes care of all generations and all citizens and, and their needs. And this sounds like a.
Those are the indices for a healthy community.
To, to bring the senior center into the Pearly School would definitely require a lot of thoughtful planning. But it seems like something that I hope we can do.
I know. I, I remember just when we were in the beginning stages of thinking about a new school. That was one of the things that somebody, you know, had mentioned. I know. I have been too, because it's certainly at the population that people don't necessarily think about as much as they need to. So, I think it's a great idea. But I'm interested to hear. To those Saturday sessions that remember when Filtrapony brought people in on that, those Saturdays that to talk about. We did the whole visioning exercise and one of the things that was on the list, and actually, when I go back and look at all the things on the list, I'm thinking, wow, a lot's been accomplished in all of those areas. But one thing that people said is, we want to take care of our senior citizens. We, we want to make sure that there's, you know, a, a location and, you know, that, that people have the opportunity to have these kind of programs. And, you know, this is, this is a perfect opportunity to, you know, to, to work together on it. And as I said, I, I love the idea of the intergenerational kind of things because that's worked very successfully so far. So. So, what can I do to?
So, you had an opportunity then to walk through the Pearly School.
We, we, we walked through the school. Joan did a little tour for Mike and Colleen.
So, we have a floor plan here.
And they were, and, you know, obviously they were very excited when they came in because as Colleen said to you, she had in her mind, her list of criteria as to what she was looking for. And obviously, that location worked, you know, fit very nicely. And then remember when the roof collapsed, that, that whole area, unintended consequence, but I guess like you could say an unintended benefit, was that that whole wing was really, really redone.
Redone, right.
You know, the ceiling tiles were all replaced, the, the carpets were all, you know, ripped up and tile was put down and the walls were all painted. So, there, it really was, I kept saying to people, it's move-in condition. There's really nothing other than maybe purchasing some things like for handicap accessibility in the bathroom. I, I don't know, but some, Colleen was talking about some chairs with arms, stuff we don't have. But one of the things that we sat down and we talked about, and then, so I talked with them and we got a kind of an idea. We were all kind of excited when we left. Colleen was gonna put together a proposal, which she did an awesome job on. And we agreed that she'd come tonight to talk to the committee. In the meantime, you know, I, I worked with our, our group internally to talk about what are, because one of the advantages to, to changing the grade configuration and what Pearly was gonna offer us is it was gonna allow us to now have some space, not only that could benefit the town, but also that could benefit the schools. Because, you know, storage and things like that have been a problem. And we do have some plans, as we've talked about, to maybe expand a few, a few programs here now that we would have the opportunity. So, and again, I think anything we propose right now would be something that would be a great start. It's not to say that we couldn't expand it if we needed more space and if we had more space. But I think right now, the, the, the goal would be to, is to have this side entrance where the after-school program now comes be the senior center entrance. So, it's one, you know, goes, it walks right in, it's one floor, it's right outside that wing. And then, nobody would have to worry about navigating the front steps. That would be, anybody coming to the central office, because as you remember, all of our offices are gonna be consolidated. Everybody coming in to the central office would come in the front door.
So, was that the entrances and to the left?
On the side, Colleen.
To the left, to the front.
If that would work for you, that just would be, like I said, you would, somebody wouldn't have to navigate stairs. It would just be, you know, right in and it would be like your private entrance, so to speak. Right now, it is, there is a buzzer and we would probably have to still deal with the buzzer. We'd have to figure out the logistics of that because with children in the school, we, we obviously would wanna ensure that the security was consistent with what we're doing now. Then, so everybody in the central office would come in the front door and then anybody going to preschool would go in the kiosk. So, we, everybody'd have their, their little locations. And I think we would try to have the parking for the senior center be out front.
By the bike pole?
But, but it could also be around back, as long as we could do something where we wouldn't want the preschoolers would be out in the fence. But there is parking out back and we wouldn't always be using the back playground. Right. So, there, there's actually that hardtop area, which if need be, and again, those would be the logistics Pam's talking about. You know, what specifically would we do? So, so what would happen would be, I guess we'll start, I guess we'll start where the senior center, so we're down to the K and one wing. And actually, internally, we've done a, a little more thinking since this, so it may be a little different. And that's why, right now, we're talking about this because it's sort of time sensitive for the budget. We wanna make sure everybody can plan, make sure if there's any implications that Colleen needs to have there or we would need to have. But, you know, we, we would still continue to work with people to figure it all out. But, when you first come in, where it says food services, our first intention was to have Heather's operation be operating out of that. But since then, we've talked about having Heather come upstairs. So, I'll show you when we get upstairs where, where we put her. But in that room right there, the latest thinking we had was that we would use that, we would, see, we don't have, we won't have a library. If we move the library down, we won't have a library unless we create one. So, we thought, might make sense to put the preschool library there, have it be like a parent center, you know, so people could come in, people volunteer. They could do family programs.
Where it says food services.
Where it says food services. But I'm thinking, just after Colleen was thinking, saying, one of the things if she wanted to, that's a classroom. So, if she wanted to create half of that classroom for a library for her folks, that's a possibility to put, to put that there. And that's in close proximity to where we're talking about. Like, so that's again, something to talk about. That also could be a room where if we did intergenerational activities, let's say, we were gonna have the preschool come down to something with the seniors. It's a convenient location close to where the seniors are. But it also could probably, when it wasn't being used for the preschool students, just a scheduling situation. There wouldn't be any reason why folks in the senior center couldn't, like, Colleen couldn't set up a craft in there if that's what she wanted to do. There could be some tables and chairs. I think that's the other thing to point out, is I don't think this is a high-cost situation for the town to move the senior center here because we're gonna have a lot of furniture at Pembroke we're not bringing to the new school. So, things like, you know, round tables or rectangular tables that we now use for centers. You know, we wanna use some of those upstairs where we wanna put, you know, some classroom spaces. But we've told Colleen and Mike that, you know, based on, they just need to tell us what they need and we think we'd be able to accommodate a good, good amount, if not all, that would be needed there at no cost to anybody else. So, the thinking was that that would be a room that could be the preschool, library, parent center. I'd love to have it in this section, but you'll see quickly how that's not necessarily possible. This custodial closet, that, Mike, is that where the teachers currently have the copy machine?
No, it's just a.
But where, what is, where, there's a little room where the teachers have the copier.
Yeah, that's right before the classroom.
Okay. So, I was thinking what you were saying, Colleen, about a food pantry. This space that I'm thinking of, if there were shelves? Because right now, it's a workroom for the teachers. Not a huge workroom, but it's a workroom.
Yeah.
But I think you, but, well, I think if she had shelves, you know, depending on what you need. It could definitely be, and it's, you walk in and out, the bathroom's right there, you know. So, it, I, you, I didn't realize about the food pantry until I really thought about it.
Well, I, I had it in there.
And I'm not sure in the cafeteria space, we have to talk to Heather. I don't know if there's storage in that cafeteria because, of course, we're not gonna be using it as a full cafeteria. So, we'd have to talk with you about that, but that might be possible to do something in the calf as well. Then, of course, there's the bathrooms, which are adult size. They're not little kitty bathrooms, so that's actually a, a good thing. But again, I don't know if you need railings or anything for people, so I don't know if there's anything near it.
I did. I put a commode over it, make it work.
You put a commode over it, make it work. Okay.
It's handicap.
Yep.
It, it, it.
It has bass.
No, I mean, that's, I mean, I have, I have taken over the entire wing here for durable medical equipment.
Oh, yeah.
So, we laugh, but a commode, people will put over, you know, over toilet and water to create because then you have support.
Yes, support.
On your end, especially if they're recovering from a hip.
In, in the eaves, it's all medical devices.
And we use it. It would need to come, it needs to be, it's an important, it's an important program.
Yeah, no, it sounds, yeah, it sounds like it is. But we, one of the things we were likely to have now at Pearly that we have not had anywhere is we also have storage in the basement. So, there's that. And then, this classroom here, this food service one that I'm talking about that says that, that room, that classroom has, it goes back and it has all built-ins. So, it, it could very well be that, that section, depending on how we, how we see it, that sec, we had to go and look at the spaces. But it might be possible to have something in that space for, for wheelchair accessibility or whatever it is you, you need.
We need space to house the equipment.
That's what I mean, to house the equipment.
My, this wing of the attic is filled.
Yep. Well, we can, again, there, I think that's, we'd have to look at the spaces and what you need, but there's possibility there. Then.
Storage downstairs?
Yes, there is.
Would it be accessible for us to be able to get it on?
Well, there's a, there's an elevator. There's an elevator. Again, I don't think we're gonna solve all the situations tonight.
No, but I, I just do need you to understand.
I do.
This is part of having a comprehensive program.
I understand.
We, we have, I mean, I can show you the numbers again, are, are reflected in here. But again, the durable medical equipment lending program allows people to have the pieces at home that they might not be able to afford to have so that they can use the toilet safely after they've had a hip or a knee done.
Oh, I agree.
And then, as they come in, then, you know, for that one piece, again, you connect them to other services. It's a very viable program. You know, it, it does need to be accessible because not all, you know, you don't always have a council and aging director who can lift. And there may not be a person in my job, you know, who can lift.
Who can lift, yeah.
And, you know, I move stuff up and down the stairs now, but that's not going to be how, we need to, you know, we need to look forward beyond who's doing the job right now.
Absolutely. I agree. So, I, I were trying to accommodate as many things as we can, so I, when, I think we all understand that that's a need for that space. And then, we have a need, the maintenance one could be up for discussion because Mike is investigating whether or not he can do something in the basement. But the goal of that is, right now, they have, they have needs for equipment and things that they need to have accessibility to. And, you know, at the Pembroke, they'll have the equipment they need for the Pembroke and obviously, the middle high school. But we have space right now in the basement that's really filled up, that, you know, there's, there's a need for, for more. But we're, we're willing to sort of look, look at that carefully. Wes has no place to put equipment for his technology program. So, I jokingly call it Barry's Bones. But as we have computers that, you know, need to be, could be refurbished, they're different parts. There's no place to sort of put them right now. So, the thought would be that one of these spaces would be to set up kind of a shop area where we could get and receive in, in equipment, but also where we might be able to invite some of the students who wanna learn more about technology and how to put machines and things together. It would just be a place to, to house things carefully and maybe create an internship. It also, the reason I'm, I think we're trying to think about.
Could the seniors use that?
That's, that's the point. So, if we were thinking about relocating that there, there may be some accessibility if Colleen wants to have maybe Wes or anybody do any technology training, or there's computers there that the senior center practices that.
Yeah, to be, I mean, it would be nice to be able to have an opportunity for people to be able to, you know, be online or to do, you know, not necessarily as much literacy, but accessibility. I mean, certainly we refer people to the library and we certainly, you know, use our, our computers here.
Right. But that, but also having someone who, you know, for maybe resources there, there that if, you know, remember, we taught some technology classes for your folks and, you know, maybe if we.
A few years back.
Yeah, and maybe if we had some of the students who were working over there, there may be some opportunities again for the students to interact. But it's, it's a, it's a storage issue to.
I'm just looking at the flip side of this, the upper level, we have a computer lab upstairs.
We do.
And then, see, I'm just, I'm just thinking that, you know, if, if all of this, as much of this wing as possible is allocated to the senior center. It makes sense to me to have this technology shop, I don't know, close to the computer lab. Rather than, like, if you wanna designate an area of the building as the senior center so that if you're sending a high school student over to the Pearly to work on a project, you, it makes more sense to say, we go to the computer lab than go into the senior center. That's to find.
Yeah, I, I understand, but, you know, again, I'm just trying to satisfy our, you know, what, so let me just finish going through and then we can talk about that. Okay, so that, that would sort of be that wing, right? And then, in the center, the new, the, the current historic place where we are, there would, we are proposing some, some movement so that everybody has an office, okay? Because all the central office would come over and our, our intention would be to consolidate our resources. And, you know, better coordinate everything.
Sure.
If we then go up state, oh, no, so we're still on that floor. So, the, going over to where the kiosk is on the side here, that's where the preschool office would be because that person would need to buzz everybody in.
And that was the old preschool office years ago.
Was it? I didn't know that. Okay, so it, it, now I think it's where the psychologist is.
Right.
So, that would be, and we're still talking about the logistics of this, but our, our thought right now is that we would have a preschool director. And, but this would also, they would also have a secretary. That secretary would spend some time doing some work for Julie because Julie has a very demanding amount of paperwork that she does and she really doesn't have a designated secretary. So, while we'd love to give her a full-time secretary, what we might need to do is have a shared secretary for, you know, at least until we can figure out this finances and all that. But that, so that person would man the kiosk door and would be a school year secretary for the preschool. Next to that, it's not currently used as an office, a nurse's office, but it has a sink. So, right, Mike? It has a sink, right? The, yeah. So, we would need to, you know, do a little bit of work there, but that would be the nurse's office. Because of course, we thought about leaving the nurse's office where it is, but then every time you have a preschool student, it's, it's really out of the way for them to, to get there. So, if we can create a nurse's office there without very much fanfare, that's where, what we would be thinking about doing.
Now, is that room big for a nurse's office? Big?
It has like a.
It's a small group room, isn't it?
Counter and cabinets and everything. It's pretty good.
We've used it for like reading tutoring, reading interventions before, right, Margaret? That's not a huge room.
Get a round table on it.
It, you think it's the same size as the current nurse's office?
Probably similar.
It's, it's not that different than the current nurse's office. The only downside to it right now, and we'd have to maybe figure this out if it's possible, is there's no bathroom. That, that is, that is a problem. But it's the, that Nurse Louise doesn't really have a bathroom in her office right now. She has one right outside. So, that's one of the things we're thinking about. These, all these.
Let me ask a question about that.
But we might be able to put a little toilet in there.
Has a, has a, the next room, the preschool room.
Yeah.
Has a bathroom in it. And it's on the same side. Can you put a door in that room?
Well, that's what I, we were thinking, either attach to the plumbing or put a door.
Yeah, we could maybe do a little bathroom.
There's also a closet right outside that room that's not, we could switch to like a one stall.
Right. Wouldn't be that.
Yeah, wouldn't be that.
Yeah, so that's what we're thinking. And then, of course, there's preschool, 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 right? You, you know, those rooms. And then, one of the, one of the other things that we're, that we've been thinking about actually for a couple of years is working and seeing if one of the local collaboratives, maybe Crest, and Pam could speak to this because she's on the board. They're always looking for space within schools so they can have more of an inclusive setting than, than they have where, when they're in the collaborative building. So, we would be looking to have a conversation about that as, and maybe set up a rental agreement with a collaborative that serves mostly preschool kids, you know, that, that lower, that lower elementary, right? But we haven't entered into any discussions about that. We're just still in that thinking.
Let me speak about that.
Yeah.
Because I did see that in the notes.
Yeah.
Now, I understand the room that you're talking about wouldn't be in the same area as the senior center.
Yeah.
But I'm just thinking, is the money generated from renting one room worth it to give away to Crest rather than to give it to our seniors?
You don't want it in the same location?
I know I don't. I, I, I totally recognize that. But I'm just trying to figure out another way that we could give more space. Because I'm just thinking, real, how much, how much revenue?
Well, here's what we, here's what we were thinking about with, again, the, the goal here is to try to work together. And if we have to expand, we expand, right? But, but first, we're just trying to, to, to sort it all out. So, our thinking was that the senior center would have the designated four rooms, access to the calf. The only time the calf wouldn't be available would be when the preschool, the little preschoolers that go full day.
Because it says eleven thirty-two, before eleven thirty and after.
I don't know, because I went, I know when the preschool people eat, the little ones.
Yeah, that's it?
Hmm, it's not much time. So, if Colleen wanted to run morning programs in there, or she wanted to run after-school, afternoon programs in there, that would be possible. Then there's the gym, so again, I don't, I'm, I'm sure the yoga or whatever it is that you would do, I mean, that's possibility. Um, and then upstairs, when we talked, we talked about having access to the computer lab. Ideally, it'd be great, I think, if they could bring com- if they could bring computers in and be able to use them down in the senior center, but if they can't, we have laptops upstairs, we're not gonna be using them all the time. We'd be more than happy to, you know, work in coordination. So, we weren't looking at it as there weren't gonna be spaces available that were, had some flex, right? But we were trying to get some ability to, um, expand some of the programs that, that we were trying to do as well. So, the goal of the Crest thing isn't necessarily to get a million dollars, because it's not gonna bring in a million dollars. But it was to give an opportunity to, to Crest, it's also an opportunity to raise some revenue which we would direct back into the preschool program. Because in order for the budget to not grow significantly, we've been told to work within two and a half percent and that's the max, right? Um, in order to continue to run the program in the preschool and have a secretary and a custodian. Cause we're not talking about charging them anything, we're not talking about any rental agreements here with any money, well, that's fine, we, we never thought we would. But we are gonna have to figure out how we're gonna be able to afford our program, so one of the things was, could we use one of those spaces and help out the collaborative, raise some money? That we could direct back in to afford some of our services, cause remember, our preschool program's a hundred percent self-sufficient.
Mm-hmm.
Doesn't hit the budget at all.
But we're looking to make that program bigger like it was years ago, cause it's, it's, it's a preschool.
Yeah, well, well, one of the things we're talking about doing is preschooling, expanding a preschool.
Years ago.
Um, by a half session, we have, right now, we have, um, uh, one half day. So, our discussion was, you know, if, if there's a need, do we want to, you know, offer another section or go with a full-day program and then have, have it be flexed? So, the kids that aren't ready for a full day could come for a half day and we figure all those logistics out. And then the last room on that, on that end, um, we were, we've been talking about this for a little bit, you know, the idea of maybe setting up a faculty daycare. Um, the reason for that, as you know, we've have a lot of, uh, teachers who have had children in the last several years. And, um, you know, this is successful in some other districts, you know, obviously, there'd be a charge for it. Um, but, you know, maybe it could be, um, you know, at least comparable to what they pay and, you know, be more reasonable, but they have the ability of knowing. Joan and I are talking about whether or not we would run our own program, or again, we would hire a company, hire a company to come in and rent the space and run the program.
That would be.
We're still, we're still talking about all the logistics of that. Um, again, that money, whatever we would generate from that program, would go back into supporting the, the existing programs.
Has anyone from Penn Tuck at workshop reached out to you or?
You know, n- no, but somebody, uh, I forgot who asked me, somebody asked me the other day if, um, decisions had been made on how the Pearly was going to be used. And we actually said the school committee's gonna be talking about it.
Oh, that was probably in that email.
Yes.
That you got from.
Did you get, were you the one that told me? I don't know. Uh, but anyway, there was discussion.
But I wasn't clear on what they were asking, so.
Yeah, I don't know. So, maybe that's another, I don't know, maybe, maybe a, a, a local, you know, group would wanna rent the space, I don't know.
Right, and, and I'm not a hundred percent sure that Crest would want.
Want it.
This space, either they may or may not.
They, they've, they've been talking to me for years about it.
Pine Grove and Rowley, and now they're not going to be there anymore, but I think there might be some, you know, other space, but they might be very interested in this.
Well, that's the si- same thing, we, we could bid that out and see.
If you can, yeah, give me some details and just let me know how I can help facilitate whatever is helpful.
So then, if you go upstairs.
Yep.
Um, uh, one of the things we're trying to do upstairs is, I think, serve both the town need and, and our need. And that is, um, we were trying to create a, a space where we could do professional development and training. Where if, the town is always short for meeting rooms, you know, every time Laura tries to get a meeting and somebody else has got the rooms, so we thought.
It usually would be me.
Oh, would usually you the one gets bombed?
No, I'm saying that we're, we're using the space.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, right, and you, right, and, and you, that, that's perfect, you'd be, you'd be obviously be able to use the space, it would be right there for you. Um, but, uh, you know, it'd give us a place, like, right now, when we do professional development, we really can't do it during the day, or it's hard to pull people together. Because there isn't space that's available, you know, it's being used for kids and, you know, Peter's library is constantly, you know, being used and. So, you know, it'd be a, it'd be a place where we could have professional development and training.
That's currently the library?
That, that would be the, the library that's currently the library.
Yeah, which is big enough.
Right, and then there's, and then there's, there's a, there's a computer lab, obviously, we would, cause, cause a lot of our training we might wanna do is use the computers, right? Julie's office would be up there, um, so she'd operate out of there, and then, you know, I, I talked to, actually, I forgot who I mentioned it to, I said, if somebody wanted to create a television studio up there, it might be worth looking, you know, at a space there. GCTV at one point had said that they, they might be interested in something like that. Again, that would serve the town as well as, as well as, um, as well as us. Um, and it, you know, if, like Chief Beardsley, let's say, you know, wanted to have a meeting, you know, of something, a fire department, they didn't have a meeting space. It would provide town, you know, meeting space as well. Um, Mike and, has been, oh, has been searching for good furniture in different places, and then we, we have, again, furniture from the Pembroke. That, that we can, that we can use in that space as well. So, that's kinda how we were, how we were juggling. Um, but, I don't, I don't know tonight if you have to agree with how many spaces, I, I don't know how much you wanna agree to tonight. Or if you wanna agree to say, we will house the senior center and further details will be worked out in terms of exact space. Because we, you know, we haven't had a chance to actually walk the space thinking, what are the, specifically, what could Colleen, you know, wh- what would be the best places for certain things? Where she's laid out in the plan, how many classrooms she'd like, but the question is, you know, if, if she had some swing spaces, you know, would there be, um, a possibility of, uh, using those, and maybe she hadn't thought about that before, so.
Right, so it was a total of seven classrooms that.
Yep.
Council on Aging was looking at.
Yeah, some of it isn't on the same level, but you, there is an elevator.
Oh, there were seven classrooms on the same level.
Yep, yep. Yeah, so.
Which was that whole wing? Yeah, well, because that's.
Yeah, there's seven, right, on that whole wing.
That's where we were when we started discussion. Now, so the entrance th- that would be available to us then, I'm looking at, is then at the end of North Street?
Nope, nope.
Where you're, or you're looking.
So it's right to the left of the first. So here's the, so here's the historic building, Colleen, right, here's the stairs you would normally come in, there's an entrance right here.
No, that was the entrance that I, I thought.
Did you come in that entrance? When, no?
Actually, it, I had gone out that entrance at another time when we, we had walked after a wellness committee meeting. So.
Right.
So parking then would be in the semicircle?
We'd probably have to talk about that, that would be where you'd probably go, and how many spaces are there, Mike?
There's quite a, probably not sixty though.
Not sixty.
No, but there, and, but again, I'm not sure you can work out all the logistics tonight, you have a lot of things to talk about.
No, but again.
Well, we would like for parking spaces there too.
No, but I think it's just in terms of just being aware, I mean, we just literally had an event where we had sixty to seventy people, sixty-six were there for sure. And, you know, we're no longer at a point where we only have that event once a year, where there are events that take place at least four times a year where I've got that many folks.
Yep.
And if you have things happening at the same time, and we, we easily have, you know, between ten to fourteen people in our exercise-based programs. And I might have that many coming in for a, an education program too, so.
Well, you might be able to park the staff out back.
Yeah.
Right, cause they're not gonna move, so they're, then you, then you really only, and nothing says you can't use the, you can't use the space over on the side. How many parking spaces are over there, Mike, in the, in the parking lot?
Oh, at, at least seven.
Yeah, so I.
Open houses, I mean, we have events like that too.
Yeah, of course, people park on the street and they park in the, and they park in the library and walk.
Creative, yeah.
Yeah.
Hopefully in a legal way.
There are gonna be more people with, with the assistance. And we, we'll have our central office people that will need spaces too, so we, I, again.
Very wounded now at Chriselawick and Park.
Oh, very.
Well, that, you know, I mean, remember, I mean, the Council on Aging is separate from the Housing Authority, and Housing Authority's been very kind to have us share. I, I, I don't, I don't manage the space, but, and that's only where one piece of our programming takes place. We've, when we've had programs here at Town Hall, where you have, you know, you served all the parking areas, and sometimes we've had programs at the church where people have had to park over here and walk over.
Yeah, and that would still probably be a challenge.
Yeah, that would be a.
No, it is.
That's a problem in this town, I think, that we, you know, we all have to deal with.
Yep.
Can a semicircle be paved over and made with additional parking?
Well, that's been discussed too.
But there's the trees.
You have what, Mike?
The hand schools all have top.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
Making parking.
Yeah.
And there's back doors that go right into the cafeteria.
So it sounds like we do need to continue the conversation on the logistics of things, but, I mean, I, I, I think the concept is one that, you know, holds a lot of potential opportunities. And I, I'd really love to see us continue the conversation, yeah.
I have a question, not logistics, but more, i- it is budget-related and, and certainly not our purview. But I can only assume, building out new programs and, and consolidating everything, there is a budgetary, there will be a budgetary impact, I can only assume. I guess, my hope would be that if the school is able to free up the space and, and make it work, that the town side is also planning on that budgetary impact as well. You, you can't, you can't increase programs and do a lot more stuff.
Without increasing staff?
Without resources, with, whether it's staff or stuff, or.
Or even just electricity and, I mean, like utilities, like.
I guess my point is I would.
Maintenance, I mean, is whose.
Well, that, well, that's one of the logistical things.
And that's, I, I would hate to free up all the space and, and maybe not use it on the school side for something. If it won't be used by the senior center because there isn't enough, there aren't enough resources on the COA side. Uh, that, it's, it's not really a question, more of a, make sure that, that everyone is kind of.
Yeah, I mean, I guess for me, I was trying to think of it, and Steph and I were trying to think of it from, like, a little more, how can we, how can we coexist and how, it, it would be, it, it would be difficult for, for us to ever take space back. That would be very hard to do. So, the thought was, you know, can we try to figure out, like, how we can get this, you know, done? And try to give as much space as we can, understanding it would be wonderful if, if everything could be open to the senior center. But if it can't be right now, because we have some, still have some needs, um, and then maybe as we're in the space, we can swing in different places, we can see we don't need as much or less. I, I think it's easier to expand it than it is to take it back.
Right.
And that's, that was our, that was our thinking on it.
Yeah, we don't wanna, I mean, that includes our salaries too.
Well, we've waited a while to get the space.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
And I would hate to reserve space that isn't, that y- the school committee, or the, the schools rather, could really be using, that isn't being used effectively. Cause there isn't, there aren't resources to support the programs putting to the works.
Well, I, I am trying to look forward, I am trying to look forward, it's my responsibility to look forward to the population that we're serving. That we're, that we're serving now and that we will be serving. I have proposed that we need to, you know, increase our staff. I have proposed, you know, that we do, we will need to make some purchases.
Mm-hmm.
Um, yeah, this town has been very supportive. In the past, since I've been here, we've, we've increased our tax incentive program, which meant that we allocated more from our overlay account to support people working in those positions so that they could receive an exemption in their taxes. We have increased our expenses, because I could show what we were doing and why we, we, you know, and to say, well, this is, this is it right now, and this is what we need for growth. And this is where we need to be, the town supported that. Last year, we, we made a minimal increase in terms of, of staff, because again, you know, trying to make things incremental, but they have supported that. They supported us as, when we were, when I was seeking the grant for the van and was unsure of whether or not we would be able to receive that van. Since it was part of this larger grant, they supported us in holding money aside in case I needed to have a match, which we didn't need to use, and we were able to turn back. They've been very supportive. I think, you know, going forward, you know, people would, you know, continue to, to see that need. It's right there, I mean, it's, it's documented within an inch of its life. It's documented, it's coming.
Oh, yeah.
The need is there, it's an underserved population.
Oh, absolutely, and that, and that's.
It's an underserved department, and it's an underserved demographic in our town, they can't continue that way.
And I think it's a, it's, you're not building, if, if this all works, you're not building and building, you might be hiring a person. The, the cost is, is very, very different, obviously, at a town.
Colleen probably gets the biggest bang for the buck at any department in the town. I mean, she does all of that, uh, uh, everything you heard today, that her total budget is ninety-five thousand dollars.
That includes our salary.
That includes staff.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
I remember.
Our gas, our van, it's everything.
Yeah, that, that's pretty amazing, really.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
She really does.
And she contributes a lot of her own money as well as time.
She cooks.
Yeah, she cooks and.
The, the men's breakfast.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, you know, as a director, she could probably be using.
Her time better.
Her time better than cooking, but.
But it is, it's time all spent, it's because.
Well, people appreciate.
If I feed them, they will come.
Yes, absolutely. Just look at the Kiwanis, you know, event, I mean, that's a wonderful, and, and Colleen and her husband and family deliver the meals to the folks who register, who, uh, order them early, so. Yeah, so there's a, there's a lot of great things that happen.
Yeah, I don't think there's any question that it, it's something that the community needs and deserves.
Mm-hmm.
It's just the, it, it is the fact of how much space we're able to give. I would actually like to wa- I, I mean, I know Pearly so well, but at least walk in and have, take my own notes and kinda, cause I know some of the, I'm getting a little mixed up with, with some of the rooms.
On the, on the side where the senior center would be?
Uh, no, that I'm good with.
Oh, okay, it's the other side.
Yeah, it's like the, the, which, like Mrs. Chick's old room and like, I'm.
That would remain a preschool. Okay, that's the one I was thinking of, okay. But it is, but it is trade-offs, right?
Yeah, yeah.
You know, so, if we wanted to expand the preschool, then that's fine, there, but we're gonna run out of space, so, cause we were trying to, we, we were trying to sort of keep things in, in, in little boxes. The only play, thing we haven't been able to figure out is that sort of library area. And I'd love to be able to find a place down here, I mean, classrooms have their own library. We thought about putting it on the stage, right? But you, you wanna be able to use the stage for the community, or the seniors, or the kids, you know, the middle school kids could, I mean, you know, that, you, the goal is to try to have some spaces that the community can use as well.
I think part of it, I think, I mean, I understand you're being a little conservative in, in that, until everybody's moved in and we don't really know. It's, it's hard to, it's really hard to predict how a space is gonna be used until you're in there and you begin to feel your way into it. Um, and, I mean, Georgetown does run a tight, our schools run a tight budget as well. We accomplish a lot more than a lot of other school districts on the little money we have, and I don't wanna, I, I, so I, I think that, that we just, like, yes, the schools get a big part of the budget, but we use it in a, in, we accomplish a lot with that, and I don't wanna lose sight of that. And that, and that this was an opportunity perhaps to generate some income for the schools was also, I don't wanna lose sight of that as well. So the town has a lot of needs with limited resources, but, um, I'm not, not to say I'm not in favor of doing this, it's just that everybody in this town stretches, I think.
So, I'm just wondering if, if, so, if the committee agrees, you know, says, yes, we'd like to, um, you know, give some space to the, um, to the, to the town for the senior center. It, is that an, and then we continue to need and figure it all out, cause we still have our own internal things we have to figure out, right? Cause we're still dis- discussing that. Is that okay? That doesn't, that your, but you could still go forward with your budget, assuming that, cause if we, if we are talking to you about giving you furniture. So you'll have some needs for furniture that we wouldn't have necessarily, right?
Yeah.
But like shelves, like, remember we talked about, remember we talked about built-in shelving, it already in the rooms, you know, uh, which maybe you hadn't anticipated initially. Um, you know, I know we, we were talking about dividing some spaces, like for offices, like, you know, do, do we have some dividers that, you know, we could give to you? That now we, now if we get this agreement from the committee to go forward, then it's like, okay, now we get into the logistics of it.
Really what's available and what else we would need to purchase.
Exactly.
Yeah, I mean, I tried to lay out what, how, what I thought we would need in terms of how we would use space, but again, I, you know, we didn't have.
We didn't have the other discussion, right?
Well, we didn't have the time or the opportunity to really look into the classrooms and see what is there in terms of built-in, because again, you know, kindergarten classrooms are full of kindergarten materials and stuff.
Kindergarten teachers have stuff.
Right, and so do council on aging directors. But, you know, there are things that, you know, that we know that we would need to buy, we, you know, we know we need chairs with arms, people need support as they get up and down, and we need, we need to be able to move, you know, a table that's you gotta be able to buy furniture that you can shift around and move without tearing a rotator cuff.
So, so we, we would be able to, we'd be able to go and take a look at some of the things that might be, so I think right now, it, it's really about getting the concept, like, are, are, is everybody in agreement with it?
Yes.
And then we, then we go forward and we try to figure out.
I, I do have a question though, just under, where you had listed the, um, some of the items and furnishings.
Yes.
Desired, um, classroom one, just for instance, it says office equipment, including copier, computers and telephones. So, are you, do you have a copier?
No.
Now, so you're looking.
That would be something we'd have to lease.
Yeah, yeah. But like the phones, the, we're working together on the phones, so we're hoping that the phone thing won't be an issue. But desk chairs, again, looking at what we have available, maybe for shelves, file cabinets, I know Mike had a, a line on a lot of file cabinets, so, you know, I think there's, um.
You don't have a copier?
No.
They use the town.
We, we're, my office is here.
Okay.
So I use the mailroom copier.
I'm just trying to picture, yeah, everything.
Yeah, I didn't even have one on my, my desk for, until, um, a year ago. But, so I could do one copy at a time if I needed. But, um, you know, and we certainly, we have, I mean, I have a desk, you know, and my outreach worker has a desk. But I would still need to be able to set up some space for the shrine counselor to be able to come in and work. And for, we have an elder law attorney who's been wonderful and has come in and donated, you know, time. She needs to be able to have a place to sit periodically, the VNA, you know, I, I have other people that are, you know, rotating me and, uh, the income tax prep people. So I know I need to buy some desks and.
And, well, you might not, you might not, that's my point, you might not.
You might not, but, I mean, yeah.
But, you know, those classrooms, those classrooms are nine hundred square feet at least, so there's, 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 there's a lot of opportunities to figure out, to figure out.
A lot of space and, and those can be divided up and.
Right, so that's why I want, I think we, I think, so we can solve all those problems today.
No, no.
But I think, you know, that we could continue the discussion, I think that would be useful.
Yeah, well, people have moved and you could see this place.
The only other thing that I did speak to Colleen and Mike about is, and I should just mention it here, is, um, remember, I think I talked about this at a previous meeting. We are, we may need, ma- may, I, I emphasize may, we may need some swing space next fall.
Yes.
Because of the fact that the timeline is so tight at the middle high school renovation, if for any reason, anything gets delayed, I, I need to have, I don't have any other place to put anything. They understand this, so we, we, if, if we go forward with this, which is looking like, it sounds like it's conceptually something we wanna go forward with, um, we would plan like a after New Year.
Right.
Start.
No, we understood that.
Yeah, so it.
So January one twenty sixteen.
Yeah, yeah.
In order to be able to, then if you had to move kids, you have a place for them to go, and that, that allows for more planning, and I understood that.
Yeah.
Okay, so when would we like to revisit this again?
You mean, uh, would, you mean to take a vote to, to do it?
Yeah, like, what timeframe are we looking at to, to do that?
Well, I mean, I think if, if you vote that, that we're going to, and, you know, you're going to provide space for a senior center. I, I think if you provide Colleen with four spaces right now and as many, much as swing space as we can, I'm not sure, I think I hear her saying she's gonna give it up. Um, she likes seven, but, but if, if it's, if it's a sizable amount of space with a possibility of expansion, it, and I, I don't speak for you, Colleen, but, you know, I, I think for the, if the committee's gonna vote, I think what I'm, what I'm trying to encourage is that they vote to say that they agree to don't, to, to designate some space in the Pearly School, you know, for the, for the senior center. If the goal is to get them to say they're gonna vote for this proposal, we may not be ready to do that. So, that's what I'm just trying to get a sense of what the goal is.
That's what I'm saying, I mean, even to just put a vote out saying that we support the Pearly School, um, but the, the locations to be determined. But that's what I'm trying to find out, like, so what timeframe are we looking to actually sit down and say, okay, this is what we're ready to offer?
Well, I mean, this is the first I've seen this.
That's right.
Right, so that's what he's saying.
So when I came to come and walk, we have to have her come and walk the space, we have to take a look at it.
Right, I think we should.
So, I do that. When I arrived tonight, I thought that you were just gonna have a discussion about, you know, the vision and, and, and support, you know, in terms of the concept, so, so that's.
I think you, I think they could take a vote on that ea- easily, the vision, the concept of having it be.
Yes.
Uh, you know, it's a nice partnership, be nice to, and I think the logistics can be worked out. Um, um, I mean, it may not be like a hundred percent, but I, I think we can get in there and take a look at it and see if we can, because I, I think they, Colleen understands that, you know, we have some needs and she has some needs, so how can we share?
So, should we just, just agree that the. A motion that we will support the idea.
You can do the motion if you want.
Be having to make a motion.
You can make a motion, go ahead.
There's a motion here.
Yeah, but that's, yeah, we're not gonna use that motion.
The committee isn't supportive of the idea of dedicating a portion of the Pearly School to a senior center, and that portion is to be determined at a later time.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Discussion. To be all in.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great.
All right, we'll continue talking forward, thank you. Yeah, I definitely look forward to working with you though to, to see what we can do, I think it's a great idea.
I appreciate your support.
I do. Yeah, I appreciate everything you do for the elderly community.
You don't have to cook any of the food at all and bring it to your car.
We really need to get this into this budget cycle.
Yep. Okay, so.
I mean, I'm presenting the, the town's budget to the finance committee on, uh, January twenty-nine.
January twenty-ninth?
But Mike, well, I, I understand the, or, that's why we're starting the conversation now, but what would the number of, how would the number of spaces, um, and the actual logistics of where things go, impact that?
Staffing and, uh.
Well, if you, if you plan initially, just, just.
Move in expenses.
Okay, but if you planned initially to go with the proposal we just talked about, four, four rooms and with swing space, that's a minimum, right? If more can be added, then obviously we, we would add that. But if the furniture needs, with the exception of these special furniture you need, is being, is basically, we'll, you can walk with us, but we'll show you the spa- the equipment that we could provide for you, you have, you know, you need a copier anyway, because now you're coming over to the new school, you know that. I'm just trying to figure out, like, we can try to do it by the end of January, Mike, but I don't know that we'll have all the, the details done by the end of January. So I'm just trying to figure out, what do I have to do to help you get to where you need to be?
Well, we, we need to go back to the drawing board on this.
Okay.
And, and go through the, the school.
Let's go through the rooms, right, exactly.
Well, January twenty-nine, that's doable.
Are you around school vacation week or Christmas?
We, we don't take school vacation.
I know, I know.
Well, we don't either.
Forget, we forget, we don't either, but we do forget that.
I am taking Christmas Eve off and Christmas Day.
Well, if you wanted to do it the following week, though, there's nobody in the school.
Monday or Tuesday, the following week.
Your heart is school.
Yeah.
Monday or Tuesday, the following week.
We could go through every, you know, you could look in the cabinet.
Right, let's do that, all right.
Christmas and New Year.
Yeah, let's do that. All right, so we'll, we'll sched- we'll schedule a time that.
Okay, so you're looking at like the twenty-nine thirtieth, yeah, something that, first part of that week.
Yeah. Okay, all right, that's what we'll do.
You're going out New Year's?
Well, I have.
That's great, yeah, that's great.
Party Wednesday morning, you know, New Year's Eve, I mean, here, our elders have a New Year's party.
Well, we won't interfere with that, we'll, we'll go on Monday or Tuesday.
Serving, serving Martinelli's.
We'll bring hot dogs.
I'll be there both days, Monday and Tuesday, so anytime you wanna go.
Yes, I'm there from eight to four.
I am as well, so.
All right, so that sounds very good, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Say hello to Ed.
Thank you, Gary, for coming. It's nice to be on the other side, isn't it? Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, it was nice to meet you.
Happy holidays.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. Uh, next we have, um, the wellness committee update.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, Mr. Umbro was here, um.
Yeah, so everybody come on up.
Is Mary Beth there?
Mary Beth's here too, yeah. Peter, Peter, you gonna, you gonna come up? I don't know, Julie, do you have anything to do with this? I don't know. Everybody come up.
Thank you for coming and being so patient, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think I know all of you except you, I don't know. I'm Mary Beth Dory, the school nurse at Georgetown Middle High School.
Good to meet you. Michael.
Michael, nice to meet you. Steve, have you met Michael then?
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
Hi, Mike, I'm Steve.
Steve Umbro, the director of guidance. And Heather has come before, I think, Heather, Tori and, of course, you know, Peter. All right, thank you for your patience.
No, no problem.
Is this yours? No, I got mine.
Okay.
Okay, right, so, are we doing the health and wellness committee update first?
Yeah, let's do that. Yeah, we're starting, we start our meetings on, in November, and we'll be meeting monthly through May. Um, and we had a, a flu clinic in, uh, October, which about thirty staff members came to, which was at Georgetown Middle High School.
And is that number, has that been pretty much the same as in past years?
You know, I hadn't, we hadn't had one before, it was run by Rite Aid Pharmacy in, in Haverhill. And so I was thinking next year we'd try and do one at Pembroke as well to get that crowd.
I even got a flu shot.
Yes, so did I.
Because I had pneumonia last year, so I thought, oh, and I didn't wanna get a shot, but it was painless, I must say.
Painless, yeah, yeah, and knock on wood we'll be healthy.
Could the staff from the other schools?
Yes, they could come, it was from two to four, but, you know, just logistically.
Sure, logistically, yeah.
So we'll try to double that next year if we can, and then, um, we've also implemented the, um, I think, do you have a copier?
Yes, yeah.
We worked on this, um, last year with the health and wellness committee, and now we're implementing it. So, we're all on the same page, the parents, the teachers and the guidance and the.
That's good.
As far as concussions and the academic, uh, recovery.
It is, it is good. And you sent it out to the parents, I thought it was on the morning announcements, right?
Yeah, I sent it, and also when it, when they, um, inform me of a concussion, then I attach it to the parents and to the teachers and. So it's, um, it's been a good tool so far.
And it, it's on the website, the school district website.
It's on the website as well, yeah, yeah.
And it focuses on return to academics.
Exactly, yeah.
Which, you know, so many of the policies.
Rather than return to just athletics and.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So if someone gets hurt outside of school, how, how do they, uh?
Well, hopefully the parent will call me and they'll go on to the doctor and they'll get some, um, we'll get some information from the doctor, and then we can let the teachers know, and we work with the guidance department as well.
Okay.
So, yeah, so just the communication's been better that way. And then for the focus for the next year, we're gonna do the health and wellness fair again, hopefully in March with a Kiwanis pancake breakfast. And I'm gonna be looking at the health and wellness policy as well. And then Heather has a few things she's gonna talk about with the.
With food services, are, are we gonna do the survey first, I don't know, how do we wanna? Because I have my own, the food service update.
Yeah, you want that lesson, or?
So you're talking about working on the wellness policy, that's what you're talking about, right?
Yes, we'll be doing that, yeah.
Okay.
We're revising it.
Revising it.
See where we're talking.
So while you're revising it, will you be looking at the elements of it? So for example, like, um, the health curriculum, the, the, the health curriculum, that's like one of the main elements of the wellness policy. So are you looking at just the policy itself, or are you going to actually be looking at the elements of the policy?
I, I would think the element and see where we are as far as it targets, you know.
Great.
And also seeing if some of the language needs to be tightened up a little bit.
Yeah, and then you would come back to the committee, because that's a policy that come, if you change the wellness policy, that's a policy the committee adopts. So you, you'd hear the specifics of that.
Okay, Heather, why don't you give us the food services update before we go ahead with the, um, survey?
Sure. Um, so, part of, one of the things that I would be working with the health and wellness committee on for dovetails of, um, food services is, um, I'd really like to work on applying for the healthier US school challenge, um, which is kind of a, a labor-intensive process, but, um, is a really great opportunity for the school and especially with that opening of the new Pembroke, I think would be a really nice way to start off. So that was one of the things that the health and wellness committee was gonna be working on. As far as food services.
Can you just tell us a little bit about what that is?
A lot of stuff, so.
You know, it's something you say you're interested in, but what is it? I don't have a clue.
Oh, okay, so it, I believe is put out through Team Nutrition, which is a subdivision of the USDA, part of Food and Nutrition Services. And it basically is, um, a process that schools can go through to demonstrate that they're making efforts to improve the health and the quality of foods and the education and physical activity access that students have, um, to improve the overall health of the schools. Um, and in doing so, if you submit a successful application, the school can actually be eligible to receive some money, um, depending on the, which is always nice. Um, and it also goes with the, you know, you can have like a little award ceremony and.
It's like an accreditation process, I've been through it with the school I worked in.
Okay.
It is a lot of work and it, it's not just food services, it's physical education.
Nutrition education.
Right, so it's, uh, so much time, um, the kids have to have so much time at recess, there are a lot of check-offs. Um, it, it sometimes takes us a couple of years to be able to, to, you know, pass, you know, their standards. But it is, it's a huge recognition you get through the state, through the federal government, and it's, you know, it's worth it.
Definitely not something I could do by myself, which is why I'd like to.
There's usually a committee at the, at the, like, probably if it was at Pembroke, there'd be a committee that the nurse would sit on, the phys ed teacher, um, food service people.
That's what I was.
Okay, thank you.
Um, the start of the year was a little bit shaky, especially at the middle high school, we had a lot of staff turnover. Um, and we're still short-staffed, um, as far as food, food services go, so there's a lot of strain. I know a lot of the staff members are feeling it, but they're all working really, really hard, and the people that we've brought in have been fantastic. So I'm really happy with the staff that we have now. Um, we actually transferred, um, someone from the middle high school to, um, assistant cook position for the rest of the year, or, I'm sorry, to a cook manager position for the rest of the year, and she's been doing just a fantastic job, she's really doing nicely, so that's good. Um, as far as participation goes, um, at the middle high school, we definitely have seen a slump um, in participation, which is a little bit discouraging, um, from last year. At Pearly, we have seen an increase, which is nice, um, and at Pembroke, it's about the same as we were last year. Um, so with that, of course, there has been a decrease in revenue for, especially from sales and lunches. Um, we also saw a decrease, at least in the month of September at the middle high school, in à la carte sales. Um, but in October and November, we had an increase, a slight increase, it was about on par for last year. Um, and there were increases in breakfast sales, but of course, the percentage of breakfast participation is significantly lower, so it's not enough to offset the, the losses from the lunch sales. So, that's something that we're dealing with right now. In addition with the, with those aspects, um, our labor costs have also increased. So, moving forward, I'm looking at ways to increase revenue, um, to help offset some of those losses in ADP. Um, ADP is average daily. Um, so, I'm not sure if the charging policy has.
I think it's a first reading, first reading tonight, so, we'll take another meeting.
Yay. That's fantastic. Uh, that will definitely help. Um, I forgot to mention that we had some computer issues at the middle high school, which also contributed to some of the hectic stuff that we were going through, um, at the beginning of the year. It actually went down again today, so I couldn't print out an updated report of all of the outstanding balances at the middle high school. The middle high school is definitely where the most outstanding charges have occurred. You're nodding your head like you know what's going on.
Why do you think that is? I mean, just curious.
We didn't have a charging policy in place that we could stand.
I think it's because the kids might not, I, I know my kids will come home and tell me, oh, buy your money, you know? And I, I'm thinking that maybe the kids at that age just don't. Because at Pembroke, you would get a, a little letter.
Right.
In the kids' backpack.
And, and we also don't let, let them get, um, extra meals, at the middle high school, they're allowed to get extra meals and things like that.
So they're not being.
Some of them are definitely.
Give advantage of the situation maybe.
I tend to know like last minute, like right when I'm about to be over my account, that it's like, oh, I have to put money in it, but then I hear like some of my friends go before me, they're like, you owe like fourteen dollars, I'm like, oh my god. I haven't owed that much, I think it's just like, they forget, I don't.
Yeah, and I can, I can definitely see how that would happen too, and it's, there's so many kids, it's hard for us to make phone calls. It's, it's like a major time burden when we do that, we do do that periodically, especially with, um, balances that are higher, but the charging policy, I think, will definitely help that. Joan and I spent a lot of time working on it, making sure that it would not be too strict, but it would address some of the biggest problems that we have, mainly kids charging extra meals. Like every, every student, I think, should be able to get a first meal, like no, no question about that. But charging extra meals is like, it's a little bit.
Yeah, it's a little bit much.
A little bit much.
So. Let me ask you this. Like last year, at the end of the school year, how many, you know, I'm not looking for exact numbers, but what do you think was the number of people that didn't pay off their?
Total dollar amount was four thousand dollars.
Was it that high?
Yes.
And we, so do we consider that a loss? Are you saying we never got that back, or?
I don't know what, if she's selected.
Carried over.
Have you collected any of that?
Um, I, we'd have to go back and check.
So, but what do we do?
We get them at graduation.
You get all the, you got all the seniors money.
But can, but, but, but can we, but can we really do that?
Yes.
That is, okay, I just wanna make sure that we can do that.
Yes.
Commencement exit is a privilege.
Okay, so everything, like textbooks, all things like that, like the, the children have to be paid up for everything?
To, to participate in a commencement exercise.
They can't graduate.
Can't keep them from graduating.
Exactly, but they can't attend the actual ceremony if they have anything outstanding.
And you don't have a problem with that, right? I mean, they all pay.
Okay, that's.
When it gets to that point, they all pay.
That's a lot more than I had thought.
Balance at seventh grade, you know, I mean.
That's, that's a lot more though than I thought, four thousand dollars at the end of the school year.
We had actually gotten that down, like Dawn, at the end of last year.
Three dollars a lunch.
Made lots of phone calls.
Yeah.
Four hundred dollars.
That's a good question, yeah.
And the law says that Heather, if Heather ends in a balance or a deficit, we, the school budget's supposed to pick.
Well, not a deficit, outstanding debt.
Outstanding.
Right, we have to cover it. We haven't found a way to do it, like a mechanism to do it. In fact, it was on my Business Managers List service, that's the law, and we found that out through the Coordinated Review. There's really no way to do it, so the only thing.
Prevention is where.
Right, but the only way to really do it is to pay off a piece of her warrant at the end of the year. That's really the, we can't give her money. We're not allowed to give, you know, there's no vehicle to do it, so we'd have to pay a piece of her warrant or payroll or something.
It's complicated, but I think that, something else that I, I put in, it was actually one of your recommendations Barbie, that students be allowed to make all cart purchases.
I saw that on you. I like that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That should increase participation.
Participation.
Yeah, well, because.
À la carte revenue.
Because I don't generally give my children money to take to school, but if they want a water and they come home and they're like, well, I couldn't charge my water, and they, I, you know, if they have money on their account, I'm saying, well, why can't they just use it? And so I appreciate that. I think that does help.
Yeah.
A good majority of the kids.
I'm definitely excited to see that go into place. I, it'll just take a little bit of standing, oh my gosh, it's been a long day. Training of the staff to get them used to it, because it will be a little bit different. They'll have to enter in their account number every time they make any purchase, so even with snacks. But that, they have a down pat. I don't think it'll be too much of a burden on students. There, recently, there have also been some changes to some of the nutrition rules. They've been relaxed a little bit.
Oh.
Yeah, food services.
The pasta can be white again.
We would have to apply for a waiver for that. So basically, the rule states that we can't just say, oh yay, now everybody, white pasta for everybody, Republican or Democrat, I don't know. We have to apply for a waiver to go back to the regulation as it was last year, where half of, this is so complicated. Half of the grains that we offer are whole grain rich. So we would have the flexibility to offer some refined grain products, but not exclusively.
And then to get the waiver, we had to show that we had a decrease in participation based upon that.
Participation dramatically changed with, when those rules were in place. I was gonna say, I'm sure they did, but.
The students don't like whole wheat pasta.
Yeah, actually.
I, I don't particularly care for it myself.
I would say it's probably the hardest to get over. It's different, but.
Fiber-rich pasta, I mean, there's all kinds of fiber-rich that is white, but the whole wheat's like brown.
And we've actually found some, we've also found like wheat products that are like white, they look like they're white flour, like I, I saw, they were served.
It's like wheat bread now you combine it with white.
White wheat bread, and I actually had a panic attack. I was walking into the kitchen, they were serving bagels that looked like white bagels. I was like, what is that? So they're getting a little bit better with developing products that meet the taste preferences of our students, but it's still, it's still a challenge. I did a taste testing for Sal's. You probably noticed that we have a new pizza on the menu.
Yes, my children are happy about that.
Yes, a lot of kids are, actually. That was a really big success. But some of the, I should've brought some of the comments, cause I had, had a survey. And the number one comment I got was like, stop doing the wheat crust.
Oh, that's funny.
So that's definitely.
Interesting.
So that we could use definitely to apply for that waiver if we wanted to.
So do you apply for the waiver for individual products, or just to go back over one? And does the school committee have to approve that?
We could. It's definitely something we'd wanna talk about, because it would. I, I feel like it is a step backwards as far as moving some, like some of the nutrition goals that I have.
You have a balancing game that you have to play.
It is, yeah.
It's just a juggle, like what will they eat? You can be, that's why I was questioning you.
It's not nutrition until it's eaten, right? Yeah.
I was questioning this whole pursuit of this designation, whatever. If nobody's eating the food, if we're serving the healthiest food in the country in our cafeteria, but nobody's eating it.
It's America.
What, what are we doing?
Right, like that, the US, the US healthy challenge is not about the food. It's about the school community in general, yeah.
Okay.
And, and obviously, this is a national problem. That's why you're saying legislation.
Yeah, that's true.
You know, you always hear Joan tell you, like, the food service people will always talk about, I mean, the business people will talk about, superintendents talk about, the kids just don't eat the food. They, they don't, they're not interested.
They did a survey at the end of last year, wanted to know how many districts ended food services in the red. And of those districts, how many were done in-house, or how many were, you know, contracted service? Didn't make any difference, and a lot of them ended in the red.
Yeah, it seems like it's a, it's a problem across the country.
They don't, kids don't feel like they get enough food?
I was gonna say, there are a lot of pictures of the empty plates.
You know, and as Heather said, when she, when she puts her tray together, she has, it's, it's full. But that's assuming every kid takes everything she offers, and, you know, they don't.
And I don't know if I explained this last time, like what components are a reimbursable meal? A student, we're required to offer five food components, so like the food groups that you would be familiar with. But a student only has to take three, and of those, one of them has to be a fruit or a vegetable. So today, we had, did you have the meal today?
What was for lunch?
Homemade roast chicken, it was delicious.
I thought it was Bill's burger.
I know, we had to, we had to swap it.
I look at this every morning.
We had burgers yesterday.
We had burgers yesterday. There was an ordering thing sometimes.
So that was on the menu for today.
It was on the menu for today.
So it was chicken?
It was chicken, it was fantastic.
Okay, so, all right, so you have that.
Yep, and we had mashed potatoes, carrots and a pretzel. And, yes, so a student came in and asked for only mashed potatoes and the pretzel.
Oh, too much touch.
Yeah, right?
Right.
But technically, that's two food components, so if she took an apple with it, or a milk, that would be considered a reimbursable meal by USDA standards. So you can see if they took that through and they ate that, they would be hungry by next block.
No kidding?
So I, I, I can't make them take the whole meal, but my staff, I work with them pretty much constantly to encourage students to fill their plate, to try, like at every point of contact with the student, they encourage them to take other components of the meal.
I know, I'm just concerned about wasting food too, though.
It's definitely.
Because I've seen the kids just throw their tray away with a beautiful apple on it, or, you know, even bag, the bags of chips, they would throw them away, or.
Raisin, yeah.
Yeah, so I, you know, it's like a catch-22. You, you wanna get that reimbursable, but you also don't wanna see the food go to waste.
Perfectly good, yeah. Some schools do like a, a sharing table, like if students have had to, like, and obviously it would be for like, and this may be a little bit off topic, but maybe for futures, yeah.
So they put whatever food they don't want?
Yeah.
Because if you've got an apple on your tray and you weren't gonna eat it, you put it on the sharing table?
And someone else could take it.
And somebody else could take it, or at the end of the day, what was left could go to the homeless.
To, yeah.
The food only have to worry about the touching.
Yeah, so that's, it was like.
Concepts, conceptually, makes sense, right?
Come in and be sharing, I love it. So, okay, touched on relaxed neurotms. I have like all these notes. The exciting thing that I wanted to talk about is that this year, we became eligible for another program through the government. I'm not sure if you're aware that we receive foods from the USDA every month. And so at the beginning of each year, we have sort of like an entitlement budget that we're allowed to use to get these foods. And this year, we were allowed to allocate some of those funds, ten percent of those funds, to purchase fresh fruits and vegetables. So about three thousand dollars, we're able to use to get free, basically free produce, which is like, just makes me so happy, you guys. Now I'm the vegetable queen. And we just got our first shipment last week, and it's beautiful. We got tangerines, kiwis, fresh broccoli, fresh green beans, all sorts of good stuff, so the salad bars are gonna be gorgeous. Let's just hope the kids eat it.
Oh, good.
Only the burgers, apparently.
Are the kids enjoying the salad bars, or are they?
Vanessa, do you know?
I know, like, I, right before we go to the cash register, they like have you grab something from the salad bar if you don't have like fruit or something on your plate. So like, I know my favorite's the peaches, like when you.
Oh, good, alright.
Good stuff, but when they have like grapes, the kiwis lately, those have been awesome, and I know, I see a bunch of people grab the salads every single day, too.
Good, yeah.
And staff, would you say they're buying salads now? Some, yeah. Not as many as I'd like to say, but every day, I get, I have a salad for lunch, so at least.
You have like the sandwich bar, and then you have different kinds of options like that, too.
The sandwich bar always has a long line, too, whenever it's open.
Yeah, so that's probably, that might discourage people if they have a lo, too long a line, because they haven't got much time to eat. So that might be interesting, I don't know how you fix that, but.
We've been making some sandwiches ahead for the kids that really don't wanna wait in line, for some, with some of the more popular.
Is there any way to do like an ordering for the kids? Can the kids do that?
Triton does a program where they, there's an online form and they have to submit it before a certain time, like nine, nine AM. That's usually when one of our kitchen helpers comes in, so if you get your order form in on time, they can make it to order. That's, that's something that.
We do that at Pearlie, staff.
Yeah.
It's to order online by ten o'clock or nine thirty or something.
So is that something you're gonna look into?
I would love to do that, especially for staff.
It would help them as well as the kids.
It's like it's quite different, though, than the, the middle high school, right?
For staff or for?
For the students.
For students, for the salad bar?
Maybe just the way the whole operation works.
I mean, they didn't have roast chicken today, I'm sure.
No, they didn't, no.
Yeah, no, they have different.
They did that once last year, and I will not make that mistake.
Why, the kids didn't like it?
Um, I think there was a, it was too difficult for them to eat. You definitely need work and night, and they only have, they only have twenty minutes, so they have even less time to eat it, so. If we were to do it again, we'd need to have a bonus option, for sure.
Interesting.
It, it is definitely different at the elementary school level.
Right.
Like, we don't have, we don't do steak and cheese subs at Pearlie.
They would not eat that.
I don't think they do.
Some, my, my daughter.
Yeah, definitely. Does he have any questions? I, I know we're crunch for time.
Are, are we going to have some type of, like roundtable with, with the students?
I have not had time to do it unfortunately yet. I do have a presence in the school. I do try and talk with the kids informally a lot. I was actually the middle school cross-country coach, so it.
Oh, I didn't know that.
So I got a lot of FaceTime with them, and when we were going over the workouts, it was mostly talking about what the lunches were and what they, what they wanted to see.
Primarily at the middle high school, right, not at the Pembroke?
But I did spend a lot of time at Pembroke this year as well, with the transition, the new cook manager, so I got to talk with a lot of the kids.
You actually worked there several days.
Yes, yes, I did, which was fun. So I did get a lot of FaceTime with the kids there. I'm thinking that at the middle high school, it would be better to do maybe an after-school sort of thing, maybe we can start that in January. I'd love to hear your opinions on that, because I know that kids are very busy. And then maybe at the elementary school le, level, do like a lunch bunch, like where, like a group of kids come and we can all eat lunch together and talk about what they would like. Some of the feedback that I've gotten from the kids that I've talked to, it tends to be, put ice cream on the menu.
They don't wanna have to buy the ice cream.
Yeah.
It's a treat now for kids who can afford it, some kids.
Some parents just don't allow them to take money. I wish they would just get rid of that at Pembroke.
The snacks? The, the snack program in general, like the, all of it.
Anything like ice cream.
Oh, that's, I see that, and I was one of those at Pembroke.
Don't get rid of that ice cream.
I know, and the hard part, and this, and I remember this from both Diane and Heather, is how they keep their program afloat is generally, from those items, they sell the snack items, and that, then they don't have to worry about it.
It sounds.
I think I must've really made the lot.
I think it's only, it's one or two days a week or something.
Yes, one or two.
Isn't it two days ice cream, three days snack?
I have to look forward to that.
Yeah.
But.
Well, and Heather can tell you, but I, I, I don't know, what I used to, what I used to question, right, what I used to question it.
It's a low-fat ice cream.
It was, it was low-fat.
You have to meet the requirements, just like we can sell Oreos, but they can only be in the hundred calorie pack.
So it's, they have a.
They have the eight.
The kids can buy three.
They have brown rice, Rice Krispies now.
But they can buy three.
Oh, do they? Rice Krispie, oh, that's funny.
Brown rice, Rice Krispie treats, yeah.
Sell a lot of those, do you?
Not yet. It, it's, it's difficult, it's a diff, it's definitely a difficult balance. Actually. The regulations on smart snacks have actually relaxed a little bit, too, so the number of items that we can offer has increased. So we could add more of those items, but if you don't.
Vanessa, how do you think, what is the best way for Heather to get to the kids? Is it, is it, is it through, like, having lunch with, with a group of kids? Is it, would kids stay after school and have like a little?
Suggestion box?
A suggestion box?
Maybe if they had community service hours attached to it.
Yeah.
Maybe a Health and Wellness meeting.
Right.
Maybe the Health and Wellness meeting.
Yeah, it's helping the community.
Okay, okay.
It's a school community.
I would definitely, I'd do that back.
I think that's a great idea.
Um, I don't know, I know during lunch tends to be tight, some people are finishing up like homework and stuff like that. But I know like after school, probably could work depending on.
Community service hours.
Like the time, the, like, some people have sports, some people have like musical, it's all different things that vary. If you ever wanted to like come into the student council for like a time, we could do that, I could schedule that in. But like, I don't know if you want like, cause you can't get the whole population, but if you want, want like a sample or something, like, I know student council would be a good.
But what about, what about mornings? I'm like, or like, do kids come earlier, like, like?
The seniors are now here at seven.
I was gonna say.
They should be getting breakfast.
That might be an idea, too, is that morning might be easier for kids than after school.
Yeah, there's a bunch of different clubs that do the morning that could be, too.
A few years ago, Diane Weldon did a great job.
She did, she talked to the kids in class, didn't she?
Why don't she do it in class?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, she talked.
First period or something.
She talked to the kids and then she gave us all the paperwork of what they wrote down, and we did it at Pembroke also. And, you know, some of the kids, it was, it was, you know, bring back ice cream, you know? But some of the kids were really thoughtful in their, in their answers, and you could tell that a change meant a lot to them, so.
They took surveys.
They had little surveys, yeah.
A pretty large survey.
Yeah, she did a good job with that, but I just, I just think listening to the kids is definitely what we need to do, and just see if they can give us some good, good ideas.
It's probably good to do a parent survey again, too. You know, we, we, we need to revisit that. We can certainly utilize some of the same information we used the first time, because we, we didn't get a big sampling, the ones we got were helpful.
I get comments every day just about, and my daughter doesn't buy lunch that often, but she has a lot to say about what's, goes on. And I don't know if she's typical or not.
About the food or about the lunchroom?
About the food.
Okay.
About what she sees going on in the lunch, what she sees happening with the food.
Okay.
In the lunchroom, and why, her opinion about why people don't eat it, and, I mean, little things like, I wish they wouldn't overcook the broccoli. Or, I wish they wouldn't use those powdered potatoes. Like little, she'll come home and just have little comments, like every day, there's something. But then I, I would also say, it can be helpful to actually go there yourself and, and, you know, look at the food. Because I did, I have several times.
And you come to school lunch with me.
And like my kids were telling me how awful the macaroni and cheese was, that it was just disgusting. And, but I went and I looked at it, I thought it looked wonderful, delicious, I would've been proud to serve it. And I, I looked at it, and I used to like the.
Just not home cooking.
French toast.
It is a bunch, a bunch for lunch.
No, I didn't think that sounded too good.
Kids like brunch for lunch.
Well, my kids didn't really, but then I went and I looked at it, and.
But I think what's happening is.
I thought it was wonderful, it had. This is my celery and carrots and these really nice, like, French toast-looking things, I thought it was great when I, actually, you know, hearing about it from your children and seeing it, like two different things. I think that, I think my point is more that if the kids felt like somebody cared about what they had to say about the lunch, like they got to talk to, not just come home and complain to mom, but come, talk to somebody who has, because I do think, she used to be a really good eater until she started going to Georgetown schools, and then suddenly, everything had, she had an opinion. And I, I could just, oh, like, who were you sitting with at lunch today?
That might be the age.
Conversation, it could be part of the age.
Some people like start things about the lunch, and then people like follow it.
Well, you know, sometimes I see it in the line, too, like, I'll, I'll come out during service, especially on a day like today where we had a relatively new item, and just observe service. And I could see, like, people would come up, and before they even looked at what we were serving, they had a face on. And then they looked at it and they're like, okay. Like they, they come in with this. And then they're like, oh, that looks pretty good.
Yeah, so they like smell it, we have Corral in the lunchroom, so like we gotta like predict what lunch is, it's a good time.
Pearlie smelled good today when I came, went in there.
But I do think asking the students is always a good idea.
That's what I'm saying, if you engage them, that's what I think, if you engage them and you know, we could go, we could go right into this survey too, like. Do they have a voice? Does it count? Is anybody listening to them? And make it, start with something small, like what they're eating. I think it may seem small to us, but to them, it's a, it's important. And we can, as adults, talk about what the kids are eating and whether it tasted to us or looks or what, but they're the ones who are there and they have to eat it or.
It's also an opportunity for education, right? Cause I think, I think there are, wh- when we've had a chance like to talk with students and explain why. You know, certain things are like they are, even if it's around regulations, you know, they say, oh, really? Eh, eh, I didn't know that. Or something like the sweet potatoes. They're complaining bitterly about sweet potato fries, but then if you look at how they were being made, they were being steamed. Who would eat steamed sweet potato fries? Of course they are disgusting. Soggy, you know, I shouldn't say they're disgusting, but you know, they're soggy. They're, they're not, okay, let me rephrase. They're not like you'd expect them to be, right? You'd expect them to be a little crispy, so Heather's, so Heather's been making sure they get crisp up, you know, but it, that, that was just, that was just, uh, came from the kids.
It's, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I agree.
Last year I got one of my favorite stories. I got a letter from a girl at Penbrook, like this adorable handwritten note. About the mac and cheese and how, how she thought that we could improve it. And she gave very specific details and one of them was, you know, adding a crunchy topping. So the next month I put it on and I put her name on it.
Oh, that's good.
And um, I, we added the crunchy topping and her brother, who was at the high school, actually came up and said that she was so happy. About that, so like anytime, I welcome all that feedback and I, I regret that I haven't had the time yet to really sit down. With the kids, but I definitely wanna make it my priority in the new year.
I'd like to hear what you have to say.
Definitely.
Come back and tell me.
On the food waste side, do we compost at all?
Something that I would really like to do, I'd have to work with Mike, I don't know where Mike is, about getting done, but.
It's a good idea.
We just started recycling and we're still working on.
Yeah, step by step.
Well, I, I don't, we talked about that at the new school. I know we talked about gardening, you know, gardens and rain gardens and using. Rain water to flushing the toilets and all of that kind of thing, but I don't know that we ever talked about composting. We have Margaret?
Yes, yes.
I can't remember coming up. So what was the resolution to it?
I thought that we were.
Okay, there you go.
Um, I think we are. I think Mike had talked to um, the trash company.
In food preparation, they're going to be composting because we don't have garbage disposal, so they're gonna compost. That was discussion early on.
Okay, okay, good.
That rings a bell.
Yeah, I think you're right.
And we're gonna, we're going to have like um, state, we're actually looking at the um, units for um, the kids to. Clear their plates at the new Penbrook school, so there are options to have, you know, rec- put your recyclables here, put your trash here, put your food waste here.
That's good, if they can do that at Panera, they can do it at school.
Yeah, right, just education, right? It's, it's part of the, it's part of the curriculum, I think that just enhances.
Yeah.
Who they are.
Mm-hmm, independence.
Thank you.
Thank you for your update. I appreciate what you're doing, I know you're under, I, I, I totally get it. My kids, I'm constantly hearing how bad Michelle Obama is, I'm like, guys, really?
But, but you've been, but you've been invited, you've been invited by Heather to come to lunch.
I'll just have to find out when my kids won't be there. First lunch, they're not gonna be at and then I'll go. Okay, it's a lunch date. We're also, we're also going to Whittier. Pam and I want to go to Whittier to taste their food.
Oh, they have wonderful.
I just uh, talked with the director, sorry I might told you.
Yeah, they, they're off, they're awesome. I do wanna, I do wanna go there, cause one of our students that used to come to, used to go to Georgetown, goes there now and he's in the culinary.
Yeah.
Program, so I wanna go and.
You will get a five-star, four-course meal for five bucks.
I mean, it's, the, the meals are so inexpensive and uh, wonderful, you'll love it, you'll enjoy it.
Thank you, we'll be there. Do you want a heads up before?
No, just tell her when you wanna come, she said she'll, she'll.
Just in case I'm at Penbrook, maybe, yeah.
Pick the lunch you want. I don't know, Pam liked the mac and cheese.
Mac and cheese looked good to me, yeah.
Okay, so now we're gonna do the survey? Is that what we wanna do next, Pam?
Yeah.
Sure.
Alright, who's gonna start?
Uh, well, I guess I will.
You're gonna contribute Pam, right, as a member of the wellness committee?
Yes, yes, sure.
Pam is gonna start by um, reviewing the overall results of the survey. And then we're going to be um, entertaining any questions and Peter's gonna make a presentation.
Okay, right, right. Right, well, I was just gonna, you know, give some observations that I, I had made about the results. Um, but I was, you know, very pleased, I've been on the health and wellness committee for a long time and um, you know, I, I take it as a sign. That we have a very, a wonderful, caring administration that would uh, conduct this survey and. Um, it gives us a lot of really good information about how students are experiencing um, their lives at school. And their relationships, um, it gives, so it gives a lot of information about the thriving indicators. And, and good positive behaviors as well as some riskier behaviors. Um, I, it's, from what I understand, it, it's the attitudes and behavior survey and it's um. Given by, by the Search Institute, which is a, an organization that's been in business for a long time in Minnesota. Um, and it has given this survey to over four million students uh, nationwide. And so it, let's see, it assesses young people's external supports and internal strengths, um. Key non-cognitive skills, um, and uh, let's see. It, it ties a lot of, of these um, behaviors and attitudes to what they call developmental assets. And which is a major concept of the Search Institute. It's, it's a framework of understanding what students need to. Develop in a, in a social, emotionally healthy way. Um, so developmental assets are. Um, you know, that they're external ones within the community, uh, adults that are supporting them. Um, teachers that are supporting them, different activities that they're involved in, and then there's internal assets. Which would just be, you know, their, their self-esteem, um, their, their positive future story, how they feel about the future. Um, how engaged they are in learning, uh, this, this kind of thing. And the assets make a lot of difference in terms of uh, whether the likelihood of students to engage in, in many different risky behaviors. Um, apparently, uh, let's see, so youth, so there are forty developmental assets. That the Search Institute has come up with and youth that have twenty or less have, generally have an eighteen to thirty-eight percent. Chance of illicit drug use.
Can I ask you a question about a, a chart that's in the report from the Search Institute?
The big one?
It's on page one dash eight, because it tells us what percentage of students have zero to ten assets, have eleven to twenty. Only it's, so we have a group that's thirty-four percent and another that's twelve percent, but the colors, cause this is black and white are indistinguishable.
Who has the master?
Yeah.
Do you have a master, Mary Beth?
Well, she's the one, she's the one. You have the same, right, yeah, we just have the copy, but.
Yeah, so we don't. I, I do have that data broken down somewhere else. Um, like so, because then it relates, like so that thirty-four percent that has, oh, this is a difficult. Chart to read.
That's why I'm asking, because it says, we have, it looks like we have forty-five percent of our students have twenty-one to thirty assets, which is good eh, eh, by them, you know. Um.
And the thirty-four on top of that, but we don't know what color that is, right?
Yeah, so we have some students who have between thirty-one and forty assets, but is that twelve percent of our students or thirty-four percent of our students?
Is there?
Yeah, that's what I, well, that's what I was thinking, but I wanted to.
Okay, okay, here, here I, I put it in a, it, it's in an easier format, so ten, ten percent of our students. Have zero to ten assets.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, um, thirty-four percent, that's the eleven to twenty assets.
That's what I really wanted, yeah.
Okay. Twenty-one to thirty assets, forty-five percent of our students, which is, is very good.
It's very good, yeah.
Thirty-one to forty percent of assets, twelve percent. Um.
So that's our goal, to get the thirty-one to forty.
Right, and, yeah, the, the average number of assets um, of a Georgetown youth is twenty-one point four. And, no, the, the students that.
So read that pers- that, what you said before about if it's less, is it, was it less than twenty? Read that again.
The, which is the more at risk, you mean?
Yes. Yes, that, yes, it's, yes, it's, it's eight, that's, so they're eighteen to thirty-eight percent likely to engage in some kind of risky.
When you have under twenty assets.
Yes, and the average you said was twenty-one? And the students that have, let's see, wait a minute. Okay, so youth with more than twenty assets have a one to six percent chance of illicit drug use. Or other risky behaviors. So there's a huge difference in, in their likelihood of engaging in these behaviors, depending on their assets. That's why I thought this was really important to understand this, right, you know, so compelling and that they've kept it going for, for so many years. Um, so, you know, there's a lot of good news in the results of this, this survey and I think it's, it's very well timed. Um, because, you know, Peter, you had been, you gave a presentation on the school improvement plan um, a couple, few weeks ago. And you had mentioned several different initiatives or efforts that, that you, that the administration is making um, in turn. That I think this, the uh, data from this survey could really help with, building elements of social emotional support for students. Refining the advisory process to meet student needs, um, discussing and devising instructional strategies to meet differentiated needs. Of a diverse student population and expanding uh, understanding of students and their experience. And, and those are all very worthwhile, important, you know, in- initiatives and I think there's a lot of information here. There's so much data, I mean, it's really, it's hard to. Highlight um, everything, but, in any case, so on the positive side, looking at the assets and thriving indicators. Um, the highest overall assets for our students are eighty-one percent of our students are motivated to achieve and do well in school. That's, that's a lot and that says a lot to, you know, the, the teachers and the administrators who um, engage them like that. And it also says a lot about our families who support and motivate uh, our, our students. Um, seventy-seven percent of our students value overcoming adversity and not giving up on their goals. You know, I, something I try to tell my kids, never, never give up. Um, seventy-seven percent of our students have a positive view of their personal future. I mean, that's a really important one, that they believe that they can make a difference in this world. They believe that they can succeed even when they're struggling in particular areas, that, you know, within the, the structure of our school. Um, environment and their home and our community, um, that they, they have a positive personal future. Seventy-six percent of our students are actively engaged in the learning process. Um, seventy percent of our students feel their families provide high levels of love and support.
Seventy-six.
Seventy-six, yes. I picked out then, there were a few on the side that perhaps our schools and community could look at to. You know, just think about, what can we do, how can we support our students in, in, in many different initiatives that we, we have going forward. Um, sixteen percent of our students are, these are high school students, um, read for pleasure. Which uh, I think that startled, you know, a few people. It, we, it's been discussed that we're not exactly sure what that means. You know, if students are just talking about like novels, uh, students read in so many different venues, you know, like. For instance, we get Sports Illustrated for Kids at Home, we get the Hockey Magazine for Home, that, you know, my boys will read and. And quite often they'll read about games that they're playing on um, the internet, you know, so there's more, but nonetheless. That's a challenge and why might that be and is that, um, what, what can we do?
Could be time, I mean, they. Generally really busy.
Yeah.
Between homework and their extracurricular duties, I, I was wondering.
Yeah.
I pers- I don't have time during the school year to read something that like I choose to read specifically, I do it during vacation, yeah, like for English. Yeah, so I do it over the summer during vacation.
Right, well, that gives us a good perspective, I agree that that's, cause I was surprised at the, the um, low percentage of.
I mean, I think it does point to the importance of finding, you know, very high interest um, pieces of literature to, for students to read. And, you know, to ask them, get their opinions about what they would like to be reading. Um, but at the, at the same time, I'm a very busy person too, I mean, just, just saying. I, I think a lot of people my age, our ages are, and I have a book club that I value incredibly and I really enjoy. I, five minutes in the morning with my coffee and, you know, I mean, I don't read a lot because I have a lot to do, but in any case, okay. Well, I don't know if it's a generational thing, but.
But it might be something, you know.
It's, it's a way I relax, it's very, my reading is very important, right, book clubs eh, or I don't know, something. Um, twenty-one percent of our students resist danger, avoid dangerous things and maybe they're, you know, they're talking about. Consciously, um, I'm not exactly sure what that, that means, except that, you know, I think resistance skills. Offering, you know, supporting students in, in their health education classes so that they can build their own resistance skills. And I, I thought this survey was well timed because um, from what I understand, this year we are looking at. Um, updating our health education curriculums and vertical teams and, and, you know, uh. And that's, that's really important. I mean, I have a student getting ready to go to college and I'm, you know, concerned about what they're going to. Find when they, when they get there, um, and I would like them to be able to feel comfortable in themselves to, you know. Go where they wanna go and, and be with whom they wanna be with, but if something is happening that they're not comfortable with, I want them to be able to. You know, have those resistance skills to say, you know, no, it's not up for me, that's okay, you know. Um, see twenty-six percent of our students feel that community values youth. Um, I can just go right back to, you know, are we, are we asking them their opinions? Are we? How much of a say do they feel that they have in all of these activities that they're involved in, you know, about their participation? Um, thirty-two percent of our students feel that family communicates positively, it's willing to seek advice, counsel from parents. That, you know, it's, it's funny, I just went to a uh, Chana twelve, which is meeting. Which is a, a part of our department, Massachusetts Department of Public Health, and we were talking about Haverhill students. And in Haverhill, they're building a peer mentor program, which we have a wonderful peer mo- mentor program already in, in our school. Um, and but in Haverhill, it's, it's new, they're just getting it set up. It's called IHelp. And they did a survey and they found that twenty-eight percent of students felt comfortable going to adults in their school if they needed help about. Or they wanted to talk through any issues, but sixty-nine percent of them felt comfortable talking to other students. And I was kind of alarmed about that, but Peter was saying how, that's really developmentally appropriate. Because in high school, you know, students, they, they're learning to be independent, they're wanting to be able to handle. Uh, or to, you know, try to handle situations themselves and it's not always the best idea to do that. But that's what they wanna start out by trying to do, um, they're, you know, they're gonna be going off, so.
Can I, uh, just, is this report gonna be made available to the public? I mean, what is, what's happening with this report? We have this information, so what's?
That is important, that is important and we, we will, we'll, I'll try to get through this, I, there's just too much information here. Um, so, I mean, what surprised me uh, that, out of this, was that the gender differences. And they were really much greater than I expected. I mean, we found that, you know, um. You know, other, feeling close to other adults, which I just talked about, uh, there are a lot more females, uh, girls who feel. Close to other adults, you know, perhaps in the school.
What surprised me was that the males in our school seemed to feel a lot safer than the females do.
Yes, yep, that's, that was a key finding, definitely.
I'm with you, the gender stuff was a little surprising.
You know, the interpersonal confidence, empathy, friendship, um, you know, males, twenty-eight percent of them felt they had, that was a sixty-seven percent of females. Um. Let's see. Yeah, so I just, you know, in, in general, I think it's important for teachers and administrators to be aware of those, of those differences. Um, because, you know, boys and girls do need to be supported in, in different ways, they do oftentimes learn differently and. Um, anyway, so what can we do with these results? Um, you know, in terms of, of caring school climate, building a caring school climate, the information that this gives us about. How to do that, I think is gonna be invaluable as we, we do, continue to build our peer mentor programs, our mediation programs, the advisory programs. Um, students feeling safe at school, uh, and, and substance use, you know, as we um. Continue to continuously improve discipline policies, um. You know, and with regards to substance use, you know, just consider, consider the options. Do we need an eighty four chapter in school? An eighty four chapter is a, it's a national organization of students. That work to reduce tobacco use and tobacco prevention, and, you know, that's chewing, that's any kind of tobacco and.
So does it specifically go with tobacco?
Yeah, that's the eighty four chapter, I mean, they're just, you know, it's it's a, something to think about.
What would, what are, what is the, so how is that different from like the Students Against Destructive Decisions?
Um, it's similar, very similar, you know, and the Students Against Destructive Decisions could, you know, if, looking at.
Are you part of that, Vanessa?
I'm not part of that, but I know that if you brought it up to them, they'd be willing to do something on that.
And they might want to look at some of the results here and and see, you know, well, what kinds of destructive decisions are, you know, something that.
Yeah, I know they focus mainly on like driving and stuff like that.
Students need to have conversations around.
Right, texting, but one of the things that, you know, that kids, kids could get involved with, which would be really effective, is the whole social. The 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 mark, the marketing of behaviors, like, not everybody does it. I notice when I go around the school, I think Student Council did something with bullying, right?
Yeah, we have anti bullying.
So I I read the, you know, the bullying signs that are all over, the anti bullying signs that are all over the school, and I think, yeah, that's that's the kind of concept, you know, you want to keep it at. On everybody's mind, you know, that this is something that, you know, in our school, it doesn't happen, we can't.
Peer mentors does a huge thing on that.
Yeah, but something like this, what is that called, social norms marketing?
And it's definitely, so, social norms marketing, and it basically, it conveys the reality through data, the fact that. Most students are not engaging in, you know, using substances or engaging in these risky behaviors. You know, what, I told you that there was some good news that, and I kind of, I was talking with Stephen and Peter. We realized that the, it it's difficult to compare the data to the survey that was done four years ago. Because it's.
Not the same survey.
It's not the same survey, but you can still make a few comparisons. And the the differences here are so large that even if you account for the fact that it's not exactly the same questions in here. They're still impressive, you know, the the past thirty day total alcohol use went from four years ago. Thirty one point seven percent to sixteen point eight percent today. Tobacco use, past thirty days, has gone from twelve point six percent to four point three percent. Marijuana has not gone down so far, but it has gone down a bit, from nineteen point five percent to fourteen point three percent.
How many sits gone down?
Youth perception of the the risk has been moving in the right direction, which says that a, that, and at that time too. The Health and Wellness Committee and the administration looked at those survey results and came up with, you know, action plans and ways to use the information. And it, to me, it says that they've done a very good job, an excellent job doing doing that. And, you know, that our students really have been supported over these past four years in such a way that, you know, they're. They're helping, they're showing healthier behaviors, and so I was, I was impressed. So I appreciate this this data, and I am sure that, you know, I have great, especially because in the, you know, in the past, they have taken this data and done very good things with it. That that will continue to happen.
So it said in this, in the information provided, that two percent of the sample was kicked out.
That's right.
Okay, which is.
Well, I mean, in in these surveys, it, you need to do that.
Sure.
Because, you know, there are going to be some students that may not take it as seriously as they they should, and that's often, not many, not many. But some will.
Yeah, no, I do, I do think it was a small percentage, but, do you know how they pick that out?
You can pick that out.
Well, they, one of them was like, they put all the same.
Oh, right, they go right down, or they go from one extreme to another.
Yes, yeah. The pattern didn't make sense, yeah.
Right, so then, I think that's three, one, two, three.
Yeah, yeah.
Right. So, but see, it's, it's normed, they're 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 normed, and they're reliable and that, reliability and validity is determined based on the way they ask the questions. And they can see things that look like patterns.
Inconsistent, yeah, that show that they're not.
Yeah, which, it was a small amount that was kicked out.
Yes.
Which says it was quite normal. Took it seriously, yeah.
Yeah, right, in fact, I think it was less than is normal.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
It was. Right, so.
It's still a valid survey according to what, yeah, according to what it was, yeah.
Well, I'm glad you get, you sent out that email to me, because as I sent you the very frustrating email last night at eleven o'clock, after looking at this for hours, I'm like.
It's hard to know what to pick out, it was a lot of.
It was just, yeah, so then I went back to the email.
Yeah.
And.
And I I tried to pick out the important.
Yeah, which I appreciate that, I mean, I I like having this, but it was definitely a lot to take in.
You know, and with depression, with depression, I mean, that's a a big concern among students as well, and it did, that showed, you know, that. Over twice as many girls are are felt sad or depressed a lot in the last month than than boys. And so that's, you know, you 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 want to make sure that that all students know how to reach out, where to reach out, when they're feeling that way. You know, that it's, we take it seriously, and we support the students.
So how do we? I mean, I guess I would love to move on to know, how are we using this information in the school?
Okay, so, before we get to that, I really want to thank the committee, and especially Pam, because as you all have experienced. That going through this data and that report is very frustrating. And sometimes you you're looking at this result, it's just bringing more questions to your mind, so. I think Pam did a wonderful job summarizing it in her initial summary, and then even better, tonight, she summarized her summary.
And she summarized the summary, yeah.
So, we thank you for that.
And thank all of you as well.
Thank you. And what we do with that data is we we create a team, and we analyze the data, and we. See if we have any other data points to try to check the validity of it. For example, there is a finding here that says fifteen percent of our students spend three or more hours a week in. Only fifteen percent of our students spend three or more hours a week in lessons and practice in music, theater, or other arts. So that really surprised me, so I, now, we're talking about ninth and eleventh graders here, so I I checked. You know, our enrollments in music and art in the ninth grade, and in the ninth grade, fifty percent, fifty seven percent of our students are involved in music. And another fifty two, and I don't know if there's any crossover here, in art, eleventh grade, it's fifty seven percent in music, and thirty four percent in art. So I just used that as an example of kind of cross checking other data points to, so, so I would think that. Maybe the students are interpreting the question a little different.
Absolutely. And this may refer to their experience outside of school, and because they are being so well supported in school, in music and art, that.
You know, like, I I was telling you, I used to go to a, an art class every Saturday for years and years and years. But here, you don't really need to do that, because you you have a, you know, a wonderful studio and then wonderful art classes right in the school.
Right.
That was, yeah. But I think that, well, go ahead, I'll let you finish.
So, so we look, so we look at the data, and we kind of make an action plan. On what what areas of need that we should focus on, and then we look at the different groups and resources we have available. Who could probably make some progress there. One of the, one of the groups, for example, that is very, very helpful at this age group are are peer groups. So we want to give this type of data to to SAD, and to the peer leaders and the mentor program and things like that. Because kids are telling us in this survey that it's very meaningful to have that relationship with their peers. And sometimes we incorporate these things into our school improvement plan, like we've seen with, you know, an advisory program. Or advisory proc, processes and things like that. So those are the kinds of things we do with the data. And we'll put this thing on our website, so parents can see it too. We usually do some outreach with parents, so we've done bullying, parent nights and cyber stuff. And some, some, a lot of college readiness things, because one, you know, one of the needs is kids, you know, maybe don't feel ready enough. So those are some of the things, you know, I have a long list of things that we already do, and that. Initiatives that we're looking at, so, but to answer that question, we kind of break it down, and in the bottom line here. Is that we want to increase assets for kids, so what are the ways that we can increase assets? And and the last point I want to make is, I think it's very important to take an instrument and stick with it. Because one of the things that we want to do is we want to evaluate our interventions and the. The systems we use to try to increase assets, and if we're not using the same tool, it's hard to measure. So the last tool that we used in two thousand and ten, you know, we we see we made some significant process, progress in illicit drugs and things like that. But when you look at it, we didn't ask the same grades, they're not the same grades the last time around, and the questions aren't the same, so.
What grades did we do last time?
We did.
Eight, ten, and twelve.
Oh, and this year we did nine, eleven.
Yeah, that was in two thousand and ten.
So we want to get some consistency, so over periods of time, we can measure the effectiveness of the things that we're doing.
Of what we're doing. Can you remind me who paid for this survey? Where did that money come from? Do we know?
Came, came out of the guidance budget.
It did come out of the guidance.
Yes.
And is that, was that difficult? For it to come out? We only have a little bit of money, it's.
Actually, initially, we had hoped that.
You could find it elsewhere?
Well, yeah, that they would come under a grant, and that didn't happen, so.
And well, how much around?
Less than a thousand dollars.
It was less than a thousand, oh, that's, that's not bad. So Peter, are you saying your recommendation is to stick with this?
I I would.
I mean, obviously, if we did it now, then we, I mean, we're gonna want to stick with this.
We'll, we'll probably look at two or.
I mean, the last survey was good, but it was, it's no longer.
Yeah, you get, you get to the validity of, for comparison purposes, it's like four years, right, Pam, so.
It's every, it can be every other, it can be to every two to three.
Yeah, so you don't want to go more than.
The bar does it every other, right?
The max for a statistic correlation would be four years.
Yeah, so we don't want to stretch it that far.
Four years is on the outside, right.
So probably two or three years, every two or three years, and then measure, you know, our effectiveness and and, you know, tweak and. Maybe redefine things, you know, one of the things that we're we're gonna look at is, maybe, we used to have a a peer mediation program. And then when all of the bullying stuff came down from the state, we kind of put that to the side, because that is not an effective way. To deal with with bullying, so we we got to kind of look at that again, and look at some of the 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 problems that we're having. And and look at if that that peer mediation program is something that will will fit our needs, so. And I'm very interested to see what other schools have done with that program, because because of the, you know, all of the bullying training that we got and things like that. I wonder if other schools have dropped that also, so that that's just another example of, you know, what we'd look at.
Have you, have you, I know one of the recommendations that Search Institute makes in here is to receive training in asset building from them.
Yeah.
Is that something that you've looked into? That we haven't looked at, but they do have them.
We haven't looked into that yet, but that certainly would be very interesting to have.
Now, they had some interesting ones, parent training workshops and, yeah.
Well, for faculty and for parents, I think on both, that was one of the things that caught my eye.
Yeah, yeah. It doesn't say the price, does it?
Um.
That that did strike me a little weird, though, as a way of train your people to do better on our test.
Yeah.
Like, you know, like, my my gut reaction was like.
I'm not sure exactly what they mean by that.
No, I'm sure it's not, but it did feel a little like, train your teachers so that we get better scores on.
Self-serving.
No, but they're, I mean, if you, they have a.
They're much bigger, I'm I'm not.
It's well researched, it's well documented, that this idea of building assets, and the assets don't come from them. But what they're doing, it sounds to me, is they're looking at what helps kids to succeed. Okay, we've got the literature, we've done the comprehensive review of the literature, we know that this is what helps them to succeed, so we call them these things assets. Now we're gonna test the kids, and we're gonna see that if there's problems with, in a community where the kids don't have a solid base of these assets. Then we need to teach the adults in the community how to build those assets. So I think it's, it's, I think the research on here is sound enough that it would, it would make looking into getting. Training either for the commu, for the broader community, parents, but also within the schools, because they they emphasize again and again the importance of relationships. And the students are telling us that they don't have solid relationships with the adults in the, in the, in the community.
Connections with adults.
So I think that that tells me, we, we, we probably need to train the adults in the community a little bit about, how do you build those things? It's not, a lot of people, like parents, you know, they don't want to be told how to parent, everybody thinks they know how to do it. I'm a teacher, I know how to build relationships, well, it's not always as, I mean, it seems to me, the more we. Learn about human development in the brain, the more some of our general assumptions about what's going on. Particularly with middle and high school students are being challenged, and we all need to stay on top of that, parents, educators, everybody, so. And it's, it's not easy to change how you interact with others, even though you may have all the, you have all the literature, right? We still, all of us are human beings, and we have patterns of behavior, and we treat people in a certain way, and the most we can do is just continue to to work on it. So I would be interested in hearing about the kinds of trainings that our teachers are getting on that asset building or relationship building with the students. Not so much, you know, I know we have a lot of curriculum things that we have to train the teachers into, but I think that we are, we've gone really far this way and that, and we.
Well, I can tell you in the middle school, the next two professional development days, they are being trained in that.
That's fabulous, I'm really happy to hear that.
And we are very close, probably before Christmas break, but if not, right after, to put that survey out. We're gonna ask the kids point blank in the high school, every single kid, how they, do they feel they have a a relationship with, and with how many adults.
Yeah.
And then we're gonna take that and kind of attach it to how, the the data that we got from the teachers.
That's great, because that's what I thought of too.
So that's gonna give us a lot, that's gonna give us a lot better i- idea, because I I I'm wondering about what kids were thinking when they were answering that questions. Because they they really have in our school so many connections beyond the counselor. So many of our kids are in athletics and stuff like that, and they have that connection with their coaches, and 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 a lot of advisors, a lot of kids in our extracurricular.
But we, we know that from the, from the faculty perspective, they're telling you.
Right.
I feel like I have a connection with this kid, and this kid, and this kid, and this kid, but I think it's a brilliant idea to ask the kids, who do you feel like you have a connection with? Because they may not perceive, I mean, there there could be just a disconnect.
Right. It's a very simple survey, it's one question, and it, you know, and it's like, you know, I don't have.
And some of them may be falling through cracks.
It's essentially, um.
Option A is no one, uh, option B is like, what is it, just one or more?
It's, um, I think so, A is like, I don't feel, it's like, no, because it's like a yes or no question that's asked, it's like, first is like the twenty first century, and it's like, if you don't understand this. And Mr. Prescott and I worked to put it in like easier terms, and then it's a yes or no question that you're answering, and with a number amount. So the first one would be like, A, no, I don't feel comfortable with an adult, so that would mean zero. Um, then you would have, the B would be, uh, yes, I do feel comfortable with an adult, but that would only, only like one. But then the next question, uh, next answer would be, yes, I feel comfortable with an adult, um, but I have several people that I, several adults that I could go to. So that would be like two or more.
Yeah, so the kids have already gotten that?
No, they created it.
No, we're we're about to.
Okay, so, when are you gonna roll that out?
We're still refining that question, so we're we're just about ready to go.
That sounds good, because it's almost like it reiterates what they're.
And it's not asking like specifics, it's just saying in general.
Yeah, and we gotta get every kid, so we're gonna actually do it in English class.
So who's it coming?
Oh, good, that's, that's good.
Who will the kids understand is asking? Is it coming from Mr. Lucia, from the student council?
This is when, it's like a piece of paper that it's.
The student council is joining.
Okay, that, that's what I meant, yeah.
Yeah, um, and we're gonna put it out in the English classes, and then we'll tally up all the information.
But is the English teachers like saying, okay, this is, you all have to, you know, fill this out, and this is coming from Principal Lucia?
Big, big bill, I'll, I'll, I'll write up like a, like a little introduction to it, that the teachers will read, and, you know, tell them why we we want to know.
And I know Mr. Prescott and I worked on putting like, we have the name of the student on it, and then we also will have like their grade, because wondering if it's that certain type of class. That has more of a connection to it, like teachers, other than, like, say, the senior class has more connections, but the freshman class is a little working on it. other than like, say, the senior class has more connections, but the freshman class is a little working on it, but.
Yeah, looking at different levels, what it could mean on different levels. That's great.
That's great. Right.
Yeah.
That would be great. It it would really, you know, help get data for students who are, you know, falling through the cracks and at risk and because, you know, even those students who are in sports and not every student has a a wonderful sports season. Not every student feels that they can go to the coach or um. Well, and I've heard students say, my coach doesn't like me.
Right.
I'm not sure I'm gonna stay on the team, 'cause I'm really sure the coach doesn't like me. I mean, so you hear things like that.
Right. A lot. Yeah.
So the coach might think, you know, I have a great relationship with this kid, but if the kid thinks for some reason is perceiving, I think that, yeah, that that's stuff that needs to be mined.
Well, the staff and student surveys that have to have to be done as part of our teacher evaluation thing is also gonna gonna give teachers some good feedback about how connected students are feeling about what's going on in their classes, you know? So there's a feedback's gonna be a a more of a of a norm as time goes on because.
Right, and then there's mechanisms for how you're gonna use that information.
Or you were talking about training earlier. Have you ever thought of for like the teachers? I know for peer mentors, we do Dana and his wife. Would you ever think of doing that with teachers about like the connection?
Yeah, we we looked into bringing them in a couple times. Um but it it has to fit into our um, you know, professional development plan and in our budget. So um if, you know, we'll probably do something like that if we determine that that's a need.
Yeah, that makes sense. Who is that?
Um I forgot what they call them. They're consultants. They've been working with our uh our peer leaders.
Well, they're consultants.
They train the.
Oh, I've known them since like my sixth grade.
Okay.
Yeah, and so they've they've been with us, but you know, when I got here, I brought them in, so they've been doing it for twelve years.
Oh, okay. Those are the same consultants?
We're one of their oldest customers. Um I forgot I forgot what the name of their uh it's a husband and wife.
Dana and his wife.
Dana and Deb, I think, is.
Yeah.
They're real school peer mentor training.
Yeah, they do both and they do our captain stuff.
Yeah, sounds like a good company name, Dana and his wife.
Yep.
They do a lot of work with um the MIAA and the uh MSSAA um.
They're big hockey fans.
Yeah.
Well, they gotta be good people then.
They're great people and they do really good work and um they, you know, they have tons of schools all over the New England that they work with, so.
And they have a connection with the students, like for our peer mentoring program. I know like when I saw them come for like the captains and the peer mentoring, they have a connection with the students 'cause like we've had them for so long, so it's awesome.
That's good.
That's really lovely to know. That's great.
So Peter, I'm I think uh maybe Alana was getting at this in terms of like disseminating this information. So it sounds like you're gonna post it on your website, you know, so that's available for people that wanna read. Would both the summary and the report itself be available?
Probably put the big one on there, right?
Uh yeah, we could and it'd probably be and I think that probably.
Well, the little one is missing some pages. It's missing the whole front end.
That's okay, we can work the logistics out. I'm just trying to get a concept here. So would it be okay, Pam says it's okay to put her summary up there.
To put her summary, I think that'd be a good idea.
Yeah.
So I think that would be good. And then I'm wondering if you're going to um some way make this information available to the students? It sounds like through some of your clubs you are, but the students in in general.
On the website too.
In general, but but that's different than like you're not able to talk to the kids about it.
Okay, so then, okay.
And then the other thing uh I wondered about is the staff. So like, would you be taking this up at a faculty meeting, Peter, so that you could go over it? Because I, you know, I I think if it's gonna have any value, it's gotta be sort of widely understood. You know, and that people understand that there's actually gonna be some action planning around this and that people are gonna participate, you know, in it. Um because sometimes some of these things could be just easily done. I mean, like just asking the kids more of.
Well, the 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 school council looks at that.
And the school council.
So that that's like the first place it goes and.
Okay, um good.
I I just wonder if that one of the the red flags for me in this report is the safety issue and especially that discrepancy between the males and females and females not feeling safe, such a huge percentage of them. And also there's it's kind of tied into me with there's an area on self-esteem data where their self-esteem is lower. So I'm wondering how that's addressed. Are there gender-based support groups in s- in the school?
You know.
Is there?
There could be. There could be girls, girls.
You know, there there's a club here called Girls Inc.
Yes.
Is it for middle school?
It usually it's middle school.
And and it's around entrepreneurship, but they have a workshop on girl safety.
Someone Brian was talking about.
Girls Inc.
Girls, yes.
It's out of Seacoast, Sabre Down.
Yeah, no, I know. I know about it.
Our um our adjustment counselor.
And maybe it would be a good idea to bring that then.
Well, too, we might have some.
Our adjustment counselor um runs um a couple of girls groups. In fact, one of them um was funded through the summertime. It was an ongoing group that she was facilitating during the school year. And rather than kids regressing, um she continued it during the summertime. Um so there are a- and and that's a group that deals a lot with like personal anxieties and stress and um then she also runs a number of like social skills groups. In in the survey, like the areas you're talking about uh come under that domain of social competencies. And um both boys and girls, they definitely have shown some deficits there.
Yes.
Um I I when I reviewed the results in terms of seeing the discrepancies between the boys and the girls too, it it was concerning and um I I wonder if part of it is somewhat of a cultural issue uh where um how it how females uh the the level of self-esteem they have culturally, how they've been treated uh over a period of years.
Mm-hmm.
Um and um I I I maybe I read some of that into it, but I I wouldn't be surprised if that was part of it because where it's like the civil rights movement where we've seen a lot of progress in the last fifty years, but there's still miles and miles to go.
Yes, they have miles to go in that area.
And I think the same thing in terms of um uh gender issues too.
Absolutely.
So.
But I think I think that's a good action plan, though, is how you can actually get at that.
Yeah.
You know, so you're asking this question to get at something you were wondering about that was brought up, you know, around the 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 one question. How how can you, as a school, try to figure out, using multiple constituencies, how to really get a handle on? What does that really mean? Right, it's a one it's one point in time. It's not like this is the fourth year, fourth time we administer the survey and we've seen it a problem, a problem four times.
That's the limitation.
That's the one thing we have to we have to take this information, you know, and look at it ser- seriously, but we also are looking at it as baseline data.
Mm-hmm.
But that is that was concerning and we all sort of saw it. So now I think it's kind of interesting to say, well, who can we bring to the table to talk about how we can get a better handle on that?
Right.
Like, what do they mean by they're not safe? They don't feel physically safe? They don't feel emotionally safe? You know, uh should we be doing something to, you know, beef up girls, uh you know?
Well, that's I I mean, I I'm just wondering what is happening because when you see that gap, so you saw it, I saw it.
We have to figure out, is it a pro- is it a big problem or is it just a sort of defense?
Yeah.
It's a red flag. You all are nodding your heads when I'm saying this, but so to to say, well, it exists in our culture. Well, of course it exists in our culture. We know that. It's constantly being broadcast. Um and and yet, but that doesn't mean we turn a blind eye to it just because it's in our culture, like we have an opportunity.
Oh, no, no, and I don't think I don't think that's what he's saying. I don't think anyone's saying that, no.
I don't think anyone's suggesting that. I think, you know, one of one of the the action plans is to um to work on social competencies in in different areas. And so that's that's the work of, you know, the committee that we will set up. So how do we do that? What's the what kind of resources do we have internally?
Mm-hmm.
What kind of resources are there on the outside that we can bring in? So we're not at that stage yet, 'cause we're just we're identifying issues right now.
Sure. And and that's an issue to look further into and. Yeah, absolutely. I just wanna make sure that one is.
It it it's a pretty broad-based um initiative in that um i- i- it basically the uh the overall plan will be to address um all of the areas where there were concerns, where there were deficits.
Absolutely.
And that's that's addressed really globally. It's addressed uh in terms of uh teacher awareness, uh providing training to teachers, um in in terms of student safety issues as well as adolescent mental health issues.
Right.
Um it it goes along with the health curriculum in terms of some of the areas that um are identified in the survey that may not be have be addressed to the point where they should be.
Right.
And that has to be looked at again and updated too. Uh it's interesting, today, uh one of the health teachers said to me that with the emphasis on bullying, it's so universal now that um he said that in his freshman classes, when he covers bullying, yeah, which is one of the units, um the kids are a- a- almost already oversaturated.
Mm, absolutely. Well, they say they're bored in school a lot of the time too, so you know, and that but that and that could be it.
Yeah.
Um that, yeah, things like that.
That's interesting.
Because I guess the last thing I I would just recommendation. What's buried back here at the back of this long report are these resources for parents?
Yeah.
And I was wondering if there are ways that we can pull it out, put this, you know, on the website, maybe?
Just along with the summary.
Along with the summary, but the re- yeah, pull it out, just because I think we can say, you know, that we did this survey. We have some issues that we're looking into, but parents are just as important in helping us to develop assets in the students.
Mm-hmm.
And if you wanna learn more about it, here's a list of reading um that this institute recommends. 'Cause it's it's not that long of a list.
No.
What is it, five books? Um but I think.
Book club.
Yes. I think that might be, and I say, yeah, a book club for parents to read these things.
And I I think that that the question raised about putting putting the survey on the results in the the website, um I think that's very appropriate and I think there should should really be two versions. One should be the full version, as Peter had suggested. And then maybe there should be a a very abbreviated version of bullet points because I think the concern is how many people are actually gonna take the time to read over a hundred pages.
Well, I think the other thing.
Pam gave us from copyright.
Yeah, yeah.
I think the other thing that um I was wondering about is, you know, if you if you look at the Search Institute and there end up being some interesting workshops.
Mm-hmm.
Sometimes if you do something like you invite parents in to talk about the survey results. So we did this survey, here's kind of the things we found out, like Pam summarized it. And then you actually have the Search Institute people there and they actually can do a very brief training on this issue of how do you build these assets. So those are things that you can consider too, you know? Um because people do like to talk about, I think that's what we ran into with the seventh grade survey.
Yeah.
Right, is we didn't provide enough support upfront in terms of giving people the opportunity to sort of talk about it.
Yeah.
And I can read something and make my own interpretation, but it's kind of interesting to have the opportunity to talk to other people who are looking at the same data. This was a good conversation in terms of the different, you know, points people made and what was what what stood out to them. And at the end, we came up with things that we all sort of saw, so that's that's good. But sometimes people enjoy the opportunity to just talk about and listen to things in a setting where other people are there.
Yeah, for the same purpose, too.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Two two quick things on mine. One, they do have specific rules on what you can publish and not on the second page in terms of their own copyright. And I didn't look at what table figures one through fourteen, tables one through twenty-four. I don't know exactly what that is, just kind of a thought of what actually does go on.
Okay, that's good, good one.
My other question was, is there access to regional or national data? Something might come at eighty percent and it looks terrible, but if it's actually in line, yes, we wanna pay attention to it, but it's not a it it's less of a red flag than.
Yeah.
You know, I would be very curious to see that kind of a comparison as well.
Yeah. Yeah, and it and it can be compared to the Monitoring the Future um survey, which is done.
Yeah.
It's a lot of comparable questions there.
Yeah.
Um and I I believe the Search Institute does have information, you know, nationalized, a national norm.
Yeah.
Well, that would probably be worth reaching out to them on.
Yeah, just to.
Right.
To get a sense.
Yeah, 'cause the number just sort of stands out, but we don't know whether it's good or bad, right?
Exactly.
It might be much better than other than the norm.
And you don't wanna you don't wanna spin your wheels doing a big new initiative to solve this problem that actually isn't
That's a good point.
necessarily the problem that you think it is.
Thanks, everyone.
No, I appreciate you so much.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate you staying out this late, letting us know what's up.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Sure. Yeah, sure. Okay, so we'll just have um a brief change in the agenda. We'll just talk about the school calendar for the twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen school year.
Well.
All three.
I I yeah, I think all I think all I think all three.
Okay.
So I think um the the before, the starting before Labor Day are all the same. So like the that that's that's option one. And then uh there there were two for um uh after Labor Day.
Okay.
One ends uh if with all with snow days. One ends uh the thirtieth of June and the other ends July one.
Okay.
Um we can't go longer than July one because then we get into another fiscal year.
Mm-hmm.
So we don't wanna go there. I mean, even what was it? Was it last year we had it like the twenty-sixth? That was late.
And nobody wants to. Yeah.
That was late.
A lot of people agreed on that.
Um so um I think it I think this is kind of this is kind of interesting discussion.
That was the one area of the.
It it seems like the for my eight years here, it seems that the way the discussion about the calendars seems to be going is when Labor Day falls on the first, second or third, generally we go after. That's been consistent. And then when it's been like the fifth, sixth or seventh, it's been, we go before. And then the fourth, I don't know what's gonna happen, 'cause that's sort of on the fence, uh you know? But um you know, if we're opening a new school in June, I mean, in September, we are probably get moving into it in June, but September. Um so normally, if you're doing something like that, you generally don't wanna go earlier because you need more time to get everything set up. That's not gonna be the case with the Pembroke School because they're gonna finish early. And literally, as soon as we're able to move things, first thing we have to do is make sure all the classrooms are set up with the furniture. They don't want you to move anything into the rooms until that furniture is set up. And then we're we'll work on the moving plan, which we'll come and talk to you about. We'll work on when teachers can actually come in and do do the work 'cause people are anxious about that. We just can't have it all decided at this point in time. Um so I I wouldn't recommend going after Labor Day because of the move. I don't think that's gonna be necessary. Um the recommendation of the administrative team is to go before um this year because Labor Day is the seventh. Um so and and the obviously, so there's sort of two conversations. One is beginning and ending because that, if we're gonna go before, we we really should try to finally get the deadline for the teachers, which is January first, to let them know that's what their contract says. Um and they've been very gracious in the past, but, you know, we should try to.
Yeah, this is like the earliest I remember reviewing this.
Exactly.
So a question for you, if on what, if we approve tonight, the beginning and end date.
Yeah. Yeah.
Can all this, can all the other dates be reviewed?
All the other dates can be reviewed, absolutely.
So that's what we would be voting on.
Exactly. We we've always sort of done it in two phases.
Well, because we have to tell them by January first.
Exactly.
If we start before a wave again.
Yeah, because because the the issue of PD days, full half, combination, all half, I mean, you know, we see the pros and cons of of all of that. Um so I, yes, I don't feel tonight uh we have to do that. Um although it's gonna be hard to get an end date if you don't because those full days count, you know? Um if you just tonight said, we wanna start before Labor Day or we wanna start after Labor Day?
If we start after Labor Day, when does the union have to know? Or is it?
After day, they don't have to know, whenever you do the calendar. So you could do the calendar, you know, um March or April, and then we just let the union know um when school's starting. But it's the before school, 'cause I think it's for planning purposes, right? They, some of them may have summer jobs or.
If it's before, they just need to know that it's before.
That's all, that's all they need to know. Yeah, we 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 just plugged things in, but nothing is, we're not we're not wedded, you know, to any of that. It really, to me, it's just a matter of, you know, are we inclined to go before or after? And then we can talk about, uh 'cause obviously if you do half days for PD, like you'd need to do more of them. But you do half days, um it counts as a full day, so you don't add as many days to the end of the year, right? But if you, you know, you we also have to look at the productivity of, you know, and the and the impact of parents because some parents find it difficult to get half-day daycare.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, I mean, some school districts have, you know, two Wednesdays, you know, a month off for PD. But that really is a hardship for families unless they have a a good plan. Um.
I know, like Hamilton does every Wednesday.
I know. I when I was in Greenfield, they used to do every Wednesday for, oh, probably most of my teaching career. But I have to tell you, as a teacher, it was very strange because you did Monday, Monday and Tuesday, you know, you had real teaching days. And Thursday and Friday had real teaching days, but Wednesday being a half day, it was like there was always certain things you could really do on that Wednesday. And Thursday and Friday had real teaching days, but Wednesday being a half day, it was like there was always certain things you could really do on that Wednesday. So I never kind of felt that I had, you know, as much much of the instructional time, but we did have a lot of PD time. Not always well-used, by the way, every Wednesday is a lot of time. But, you know, I I think, you know, we we've talked about the, we've talked about it as administrative team. And when we when we plugged the full days in this year, we we didn't even see where we could put half days in because of the way the calendar works.
I don't mind those half days either, so I think we talked about just the productivity of the day.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, by the time you get going and.
Right, and if you go before, if we if we decide to go before Labor Day, right? Um the last day of school, that's still June twentieth.
And so clarification, after Labor Day will be the twenty-third?
Twenty twenty-third or the twenty-fourth, depending on whether we keep as many PD days. If if we take, if we, okay, so let's just say how the calendar works. Usually there's the day before school for the teachers to come. We, you know, sometimes do PD, but sometimes we do meetings, right? Then we have three full-day PD days, so that's that's the one hundred and in a hundred and eighty school days. So that's the one hundred and eighty-four days the teachers are paid to to work. If you remember in the last contract, we had discussions with the union about more time. And we had been adding those half days and wanting to add those extra hour so that we didn't have two hours, we had three hours. That that hasn't really worked out as we had planned. So this year, we thought because of the way the holidays work and the the other days and conferences and all the other things. We thought that we would take those five or six hours that we now we now have and add a day.
Uh can I just tell you what I?
Yeah.
Really don't like about this before Labor Day.
What is it?
I hate the last day of school being on a Monday. This makes no sense. It to me, it makes no sense to have the last day of school be on a Monday. I mean, if you're leaving on vacation.
I wonder what the amount of kids will.
You're gonna leave on Saturday. Who's gonna who's gonna send their kid to school on Monday for the last day of school?
Well, I mean, that's something we can think about, right? So if if, you know, we we could, um, you know, I don't know if we could figure out a way to do two half days instead of a full day. And then you gain, then you get those days back and you end in the end of the week before.
So we just.
You know, we could do that if you were more comfortable with that. Cause I I see what you're saying.
I'll read again what you would do.
Well, you could, instead of taking a full day, cause the, cause you're adding a day, if you want to not lose that time.
Yep.
We could figure out a half, two half days. So that, so if you did two half days, the the half days count as full as days.
So it would be Friday?
Thursday.
Thursday.
I mean, Thursday, the sixteenth?
Yeah.
Can I just um interject that?
Sure.
That if if there were a snow day then, then you're back to a Monday.
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely, absolutely, but it does.
On a Monday.
And we're probably gonna have snow days, so this Monday isn't.
Probably not a Monday. But if you back it to Friday, then we have, now we're now.
Especially if you listen to the farmers' almanac. We're gonna be getting up July first.
That is a good point. That's the case.
You're right.
And I would, I I would, so I'm 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 just hearing the voices in my head, right? We started before Labor Day and we're still going till the end of June?
I know.
So let's just start after Labor Day. If we have to go to the end of June.
Oh, God, I wanna. I mean, it's your it's your call, but I I would not advise that.
I mean, I would I would just say that the one thing I've always heard from people that they can agree on is that they want to get out earlier in June.
Yeah.
I know it's not a lot earlier.
They don't agree on before or after Labor Day, but they do agree on getting out earlier.
I'm saying, that's what I'm saying, like if you're if you're.
And I and I still and I still believe that parents, if they have a, if they have a scheduled Labor Day weekend planned.
That's why we do the Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday.
They're gonna go.
That's why we give them a Friday.
Yeah, they're gonna go. They're not gonna, they're not gonna send their kids to school. I mean.
I I, you know, I I can't, I don't have an exact count for you, but I'm not, I'm not sure that that's been a big problem.
No, it hasn't. It hasn't. We get the enrollment for the first day of school and it.
You get the long, you get an extra long weekend anyway, you get Friday.
Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday. But have you have you found that people don't?
No, but if they go like that week of before Labor Day.
Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, you mean?
Yeah, if they go the the week before into the holiday weekend, yeah. Then those kids wouldn't be in school if we went before. But it doesn't stick out to me, when we got the enrollment.
Right.
That it was a ton of kids. But I'm just saying, families, if they have that week planned, they're gonna go. And I don't blame them.
But part of the reason of doing it early like this is that they have the opportunity to plan that. Cause that, cause when we do it in March and that's the first conversation we have about it.
Yeah, no, I.
You know, and we finalize it in April, I get that problem.
No, I I was in favor, I mean, I was in favor of the before Labor Day start until I looked at the. It was just that Monday ending thing.
Yeah, no, I think that's, I think that's a good point.
Just drives me crazy, cause you just feel like, if you want to go away, oh, you're locked. You gotta stay another week, cause there, you know.
Yeah, no.
Cause you gotta go to school on Monday for the last day or.
Okay, so would anyone like to make a motion?
What's the motion, do you think, Barbie? What, I don't know. Does anyone want to make a motion?
Oh, it's whatever people.
Yeah, what do you?
Nobody? Okay, the chair will entertain a motion to. Begin school. On. Hold on.
I know, I know.
On, you're thinking. Tuesday, September first, twenty fifteen.
For teachers.
Oh. School begins.
Students, cause the kids come, the teachers come on Monday.
On Tuesday, September first, for students with an end date of Monday, June. I'm gonna stick with Monday, June twentieth.
Yeah.
Is that okay?
It will probably change.
Well, that's what I'm gonna, it probably will change. Monday, June twentieth, twenty sixteen.
Yeah, so moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we we'll continue the discussion about the other days, so we can take a look at the PD thing and all that stuff.
Yeah, I'd like to do that.
Yeah, we can do that.
Because I think more time needs to go into that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay. Thank you for moving that, I appreciate it.
I I think the the end of school would be, I know people are gonna be like, why? But the end of school would have been so late, because we know we're gonna have snow days. It's inevitable.
You have too many, you can't go after July first.
Right, and and it's too hot.
Then you start, so you start taking April vacation, that's what people do.
I was gonna say.
They start to say, oh, I don't wanna go till the thirty-nine.
No, I have always been an an after Labor Day person, but I think reasonably, we made the right decision.
I think it's gonna depend, like I said, the the first few days of the month are one thing versus the last, you know. It I think it's just a, it's just interesting in the in the eastern part of the state. Cause it out west, everybody goes before, central mass, everybody goes before, but there's so, I think it's just the area, you know? It's like vacations, there's the shore, the eat, the ocean, a lot of people have summer jobs, people have summer homes.
I think it's something to look forward to too, though, when the kids go back to school, they're only going back for a couple of days. And then they have a long weekend, so it's.
I agree, and then four days and then five days.
So.
And then they can get down to business.
Feel comfortable, I I feel comfortable with that. So we have two things.
I'll let the union know.
Good. We have two things then that we're gonna do next time. Um Margaret's school report, we're supposed to be hearing Mike's.
Mike got called out for an emergency at the high school.
Yeah, we'll do the transition plan next time, absolutely.
Okay, and.
No worries.
Okay.
It'll give us more time, cause we're working on a couple of things.
Okay, and then um subcommittee reports.
Wait a minute, I have finance, even though there's nothing on there.
Oh, okay, yes.
I have turf field stuff.
Oh, okay. So the turf field, so questions that I have on the turf field that I've been asked by people is, um, when is, when is that gate gonna be open that the kids can go on it?
Well, right now, the final closeout, which some of what you're gonna talk about tonight is the closeout. Uh, you know, until the warranties are all signed and the liabilities all clear. And we do need signage, because we have people who want to walk their dogs on the turf field. We can't allow that.
We can't allow that.
No, there was somebody who was not happy the other day because it was locked and he couldn't get on, he has dog with him. So I'm sure he didn't intend any harm with it, but the the fact is that, you know, we're.
You can't allow dogs, I mean, I love dogs, I love walking my dogs, but I wouldn't.
But and I don't know if he was planning to walk the dog on it, but the dog, he had a dog with him, so. And I know the kids have been sort of sneaking down and going out, so I said to Peter, I know it's hard, but you you have to make sure that until everything is signed, sealed, and delivered and. You know, but things have been checked off, that we don't want there to be any.
So are we having signs made?
Yeah, we talked about that today um with um a Mike, I talked about it with Mike and Mark Perry.
Okay.
Was weighing in on it too, so um, yeah, so and we've already started the trainings for Mike's crew, have already started training.
Yeah, it looks beautiful.
Isn't it?
And I I hear so many compliments and just when like when we, I was going into the school the other day for the um, for the concerts. I could see like the parents like, you know, stopping before they went in to look over, and it's it's pretty impressive.
It is, and there there still are some things, obviously, for the for the for the spring. Uh, one of the butters, uh, where we dump the, you know, we put the dirt, was a little concerned about the aesthetics on it. So I, the day it rained, I went over, I met him there with Mike and Steve from Conservation, cause it was a little erosion on the hill and we wanted to make sure it wasn't going down. And um, you know, he's very happy, you know, Mike went and bought, what do you call those things, that they're like stuffed, they remind me of sausages, but they're like stuffed stockings with.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just because.
Silk stockings.
Silk stockings, whatever, so so that you could, so that we could have a barrier, he was very happy with that. And then in the spring, obviously, we need to do some more with the regrading it and throwing some nice wildflower mix on it and uh seeding it. But the Quark will come back and do that, I thought they just ran out of time, they ran out of time. Um so, you know, that, other than that, I think we we're, the neighbors are all all good. And I think the biggest thing now is the GAA folks are fighting for the time on the turf. Everybody wants the, you know, they're trying to get their their schedule uh set up for that, so that's not a bad problem to have.
Well, we're most appreciative to the GAA for.
Oh, my goodness.
All their financial support and.
They will be, in fact, John didn't come tonight, but they will be coming uh with a forty-four thousand dollar check. Because in addition to the donation, they also uh purchased two lights so that we could have six lights. Remember, we were talking about doing that in phases?
Fantastic.
But they're going to donate, so they'll be bringing a check that you'll accept the donation for, uh, for something like that. But um, yeah, it I mean, as soon as, as soon as all that liability and stuff and and that, but the question is, I don't know if the plan is to to keep the gate unlocked.
Yeah, I wouldn't.
I'm I'm thinking, I'm thinking it's gonna be locked and we're gonna have, you know, we're gonna have uh keys. Um, you know, and limited people are gonna have the keys.
Yeah, see, I think the kids are just thinking that after school, they can go and throw the ball around.
And they're so used to just going and throwing them.
Yeah.
Yeah, and maybe and maybe that will be possible if they get, you know, if they connect with a coach or something.
And if they have gym classes, can't they have gym classes on the field? Yeah, that it can be open during the day.
Yeah.
But I would say you'd probably get locked after sports are over.
Yeah.
And on the weekends, it would be locked.
Yeah. Yeah, unless.
And there were, remember I told you there were a couple of issues with a light? If you stand at Dunkin' Donuts and you look right in the middle, you can see there's a light pole. For some reason, that light, a couple of neighbors were concerned, cause it seemed that it was like shining in their house, which shouldn't be the case, because the lights are supposed to shine down. And no house is directly under but any one of those lights. Um so they must must go, I guess, as the light company, and they're they're coming back to do a test. And uh our intention would be to literally, when they come, have someone, maybe Mike has offered to do it, but maybe Mike would go to the two neighbors' houses and actually physically be there, so he could see for himself. You know, that's what I talked to him about today, and he was willing to do that, if that's what we choose to do. So anyway, we're we're, a few little things we're working out, but everybody's working collaboratively.
That's great.
Did you have any other question? Did you say you had another question?
Me? No.
No.
I have a change, I have a change order for a credit.
Oh, a credit.
Thirty-six hundred dollars.
The project is probably gonna end with forty-four thousand dollars. I mean, it won't end with that, cause we'll spend it, we'll spend it on the mound that they wanted to get.
That's great, though.
But it.
So the net, we'll go in line with the next step of what the alts were?
Right.
Yep. That the staff agreed on.
But honestly, they got all of those things. The only thing, the only thing outstanding, the only things they have outstanding.
Were the lights and they paid for that.
They gave you the lights, and uh so it would be a mound, uh, which is about, I think that was about fifteen to twenty thousand dollars.
That was wiring for the school board?
And then the other thing is, they still, they have a scoreboard donation, but they don't have.
Installation.
Installation. They were hoping to get a little donation for that, but it hasn't quite happened for them, but that's okay, because they have the money, we would use whatever, some of that money, you know, to um.
Right, and so what some people have asked too is um about the Lancer or G to be put in the middle of the field.
Yeah.
So we are working to see how much like a template would cost, because it was too much money to sew it in, it was like eighteen thousand dollars. So to, I I guess it lasts.
A season.
A season, so we'll see how much it costs and, cause I know the kids, a lot of the kids, it was important to them, like we want the G or the Lancer, or at least the G.
Right, or you know, sometimes like, you know, you know, sometimes you'll watch like the Patriots game, and it'll have the Patriots logo or something, I mean, you could have, you know, in one end zone, you could have Georgetown, and the other, you could have Royals. You know, instead of a logo in the middle, so.
On TV, whether the game's at home or it's not at home.
Yeah, I know, so they, but what, they want some branding on the field, and I think that's a fair request, we we'll try to work that out.
Okay, so um.
I don't think you have been voting on the change orders, I think you've just been signing them, but you've been voting on the warrant.
So the one fifty-eight?
Yeah.
Okay, so the um, she will entertain a motion to approve um. The amount of one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty-six cents. I don't have to do them all separate? Um, even those separate companies? Okay, um, to Quark Construction Corporation and Gale Associates as presented.
So moved.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Is, does everybody have to sign this?
Um, three.
That actually concludes, doesn't it, Joan?
Twenty-four thousand dollars is left, um, Gale is done.
Yeah.
And it's twenty-four thousand dollars outstanding, that's owed to Quark, that will be paid in the spring. Part part retainage, part parking lot, things.
There's a punch.
You don't have to do that.
That they have to complete, so I think it's, what did it say, one one percent of them? Was a set a reserve of one percent, so that when they do the work, they get paid, they don't get paid before they do the work.
Okay. I'm glad to see it's all done.
Oh, it's very exciting.
And they did a great job. They were, you know, the workers were out there like at all hours, like I'm saying, what, but you know, I know they wanted to get it done as well, but it was, it was great to see them out there, like six, seven o'clock at night, you know, doing.
They had to stitch, like all those numbers, they had, they have to, they had to glue them or stitch them in. What comes is the carpet with the lines, but everything else, every, so we lined it for four different sports, all of those lines had to be. It was, it was an amazing amount of work for those, for those workers.
Okay, um, now we're gonna move along to subcommittee reports. Uh, budget and finance. Um, governance?
We should get a meeting.
Nope, you haven't. Uh, negotiating, we have met, and then you guys, you also have a meeting tomorrow. Um, and things are going well, all the meetings are scheduled, like, I think, three more out, correct?
Right, so you'll you'll want to figure out which meeting, which which school committee meeting you want to do an update for the for the group at. So, you know, it probably after the third meeting.
Yeah, which is the next Monday, which is like January the first, um, the second week of.
January eighth, January eighth, I think.
That's the meeting or our meeting, the school committee meeting.
I think January eighth is your school committee meeting.
The fourteenth is the negotiation.
Yeah, so probably the one after that, yeah.
Okay.
So that was January twenty-second?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's negotiations update.
And then uh public relations, Pam?
Um, yes, we met this morning and we had a very productive meeting. We uh, we looked at the communications plan, the draft, and we are going to edit it again and resubmit it and then come out with a new draft. So it's not yet at a a stage where it's um ready for review. And then we talked about, let's talk, and Michael, why don't you fill them in on what you came up with, cause Michael came up with a brilliant, brilliant idea.
The, I guess the, rather than than paying for a service, we can do it largely ourselves. Um, and and sort of get the same, the same opportunity to communicate with the public um in in an obvious and and warm and kind of a welcoming way. Uh, more than just a contact us page and and a way to sort of channel the information. Um, I guess mostly to Carol, I think we talked about today, for at least, yeah, at least to start. Um, but doing it for low to no cost.
Well, Michael designed it.
He designed, it was unbelievable.
Yeah.
Oh, great.
So, and it and it wound up being easy on my end to do, it's just a matter of kind of making it pretty and.
Oh, that's great.
It was unbelievable.
Yeah.
So we were hoping maybe we could. Uh, but maybe we, we were thinking that one of the things we wanna do is, um, maybe identify some topics, which you could help us with. Like, um, being members of the public and parents, you know, what kind of topics do you think you might have questions about? So, if you have questions about the building project, or if you have questions about the buses, or you have questions about, what are those things that, you, high things that you think? And then, of course, there'll be other, they can direct it on anything. Um, but if we could, you know, we'd have to launch it, and if we could launch it after the, you know, sometime after the holidays, in the new year, anyway. It, it really, it, I think it has potential to be really.
So, it'll sit on the website?
Yep, we're gonna have a nice little logo that Michael's creating, we, we're trying to figure out the name. We don't know quite what to call it.
Fast connect, talk with us, quick chat, your comments.
What did you call it? We, what was, what was it, listen, um. The listening one was good, to, we're listening. We're just looking for something that's kinda short. You know, so we can put on a little button.
And then, the, the only other thing was, we talked about a, a district satisfaction survey, that's gonna be the main focus and topic of our next meeting. Uh, we're gonna bring information together and, and really get, get to work on that.
And if you have, like, areas or topics that you think we should generate some questions around, you know, for satisfaction, if you, if you send them to any of us. You know, we'd love to, you know, cause we can generate questions, there's also banks of questions that we have access to. But we really wanna kinda hone in to, like, well, what is it that's most important? That we wanna know that will be useful to us in our strategic plan for next year, cause remember, we have to start a new three-year strategic plan. So, it'd be nice to have that be a, something that's.
We'll use the.
And we can generate, the thing we decided we're gonna generate ourselves, right, we're gonna do something like on a Survey Monkey or, or something like that. And seeing how quickly Michael designed that other tool, I'm quite certain that we got a technology guy who's, you know, able to help us with it, like that.
You can only ask so many questions, and then you have to pay.
Would that be the case then?
And then you can take off the, the Survey Monkey branding.
We have an account that she, that she got, so. So, maybe we won't have to restrict the questions. We had a lot, we did a lot today.
Um, safety? School building?
Yes, uh, we had a meeting on December ninth, and, let's see. Yes, and, uh, so the Georgetown Middle High School, uh, the contingencies are on track and on budget. The April start is key, we talked about the gym renovation plans and what they would include. Um, floor sanding and finishing, restriping, new bleachers with ADA access. Uh, we're looking into the logo work, that was basically the elements of the gym.
Cause you'd have to slide it down, so that, you'd have to probably pay to have whoever did it before do it again.
So, we, we're gonna have new bleachers. Is that room to the right, the far right, gonna be moved?
The room to the far right, so when you first walk in the door, no, the closet?
The one, yeah, across the way, when you walk in and it's at the end of the bleachers.
Oh, way down, like, how to get out of the building on the side? No, I don't, it's not, I think that's going, some of that is going to be, uh, a storage area, I think it's not gonna remain a, a completely wide open space.
So, that must have been on another plan, that we were gonna remove that. I know we talked about that.
Well, the, the, what they were wanting to do is. Move the, move the wall next to that, all the way out eight feet, but.
So, is the, is the gym itself, the, the area that the children play on, is it gonna be bigger?
I don't believe so.
Exact same, it's just that the bleachers are gonna be new, and they're gonna be.
Pushed back a little bit?
So, they're not gonna be as close to the regulation line, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
So, what, where, where we really gain is, you know, like, when you watch where the boys sit, boys and girls sit right now, like, on their, on their, their seats while they're playing. If you watch, their feet and their knees are like. Yeah, that's where, that's where you're gonna notice the big difference, Barbie. So, the, that, that's the goal, is to have that be more regulation, slide the whole thing down, so the bleachers that we have now won't come out as far, they'll be probably higher, and then, you know how now there's a big space in the middle? There won't, that, they're all gonna, they're gonna go from, and I think they're, they're not gonna have that closet when you first walk in either, I think the bleachers are going from wall to wall.
Okay, so that closet is gonna be gone as soon as you walk in.
That's what I think the storage is going out to the.
Okay, so, well, that's good then, because the bleachers aren't very close right now to, so, that's good to know that that will be out, okay.
Um, and then, for the Penbrook School, um, we talked about an interesting issue, and, and that was the need to post signs in the woods to warn hunters in the Georgetown Rowley Forest. And I'm kinda, I'm not quite sure why, you know, we haven't ever discussed this before, because.
Never have, I know.
It, it just seems like a really good idea, because that forest abuts the school. And it may be because the forest is closer to the school than it ever was before. There are, um, you know, of course, there are hunting regulations, and, but I looked at them, and it, it does say that you need to stay five hundred feet away from various different types of structures. But it did not specifically say schools, it said, like, service buildings, I don't know, maybe a school falls into that category, whatever. The committee agreed that it was a very good idea to post signs. We discussed, um, various funding sources such as the school budget. Or the contingency, the contingency fund. I have contacted, I have contacted, um, I've not, I've contacted the Conservation Office, like, Commission. Susan Flint in the office, and, and we are going to go.
She's here in Georgetown.
Yes, yes, so we are going to go out and walk and take a look at this, and, but it's, it's gonna be a continual process, anyway, you know, it, we probably will end up contacting the state, I've certainly gone on the website for the Georgetown Rowley State Forest. Um, and, you know, so the, we're gonna put up those signs somewhere. Wherever we need to, to keep the kids safe. And then we, uh, also, the next meeting, uh, oh, next, actually, maybe it was this week. There was a meeting about kitchen equipment in the Penbrook. So, I mean, that's just.
I won't be making the Kwanis gravy on a.
On schedule, um. Seeding, just to let you all know about the seeding of the fields, the plan is, the south fields are going, the ones that you see when you first drive in will take place in the spring, and the seeding of the north fields, um, where the, it's gonna be where the old Penbrook, well, or Penbrook is now, and also, I think maybe the septic field or something like that, is gonna be seeded in the fall.
And then, you have to stay off it for a year?
Have to stay off it for a year to two. Um, we discussed the shed between the fields to store maintenance equipment, Peter Durkey mentioned that prefabs, the most cost-efficient are available at a standard size of thirty-six time by twenty-four. Mike Farrell wants the town to oversee the purchase of the shed, but use the funds from the project. Um, that seemed to be doable.
So, was it, wasn't that not capital improvement?
Right, so it won't need to be there.
It wasn't, just thinking that it was not put forward either.
Would it have been put forward, Michael, do you think, if it hadn't been coming out of the budget for the?
I think it would have, but, but the expectation when Mike came in, it was.
Oh, he said.
With fair confidence that it would come out of the budget, so.
That'll, you know, pretty much.
And they made it bigger, they made it slightly bigger, right?
Because it's less expensive, because that's the standard size. Um, and then we also discussed the idea of making, of having a concession stand in that area, very, very simple, you know, where you just could sell like, you know, packages of Oreos. And, and waters or something like that.
Wheat, Rice Krispie treats or something? This is the out of school anyways.
You're right, we don't.
Right, um, and then we also, uh, just, you know, discussed ideas for using the contingency. And they're looking for suggestions, if any of you have any suggestions, please feel free to let me know, or let anyone on the committee know, or I'd be happy to convey any kind of thoughts.
Use some of the money on the contingency to make a bigger gym at the high school.
I think they were thinking like.
Okay, so next meeting's the thirteenth of January?
Um, that has not been totally decided, but that's my estimate.
I think, I think they're trying to get a meeting, unless they change their mind from yesterday, I think they're trying to get a meeting on the sixth, because the, the discussion is coming up again about whether or not they need to do environmental monitoring while they're digging on site at the high school. So, the decision that the, that committee made at one point, well, there's, there's disagreement about what the decision was. What I'm confident the decision had to do was, we're not gonna test for arsenic. But, the confusion is that some people think that what was said was, you're not testing for arsenic, but just pretend it's there, and then do what you have to do to take care of it. That was code to some people to do a health and safety. Yeah, well, exactly, and, and what, and what I, how I weighed in on it was, I said, well, number one, there were, the gentleman from the state said, anything, even a hundred in, in a naturally occurring environment is not really an alarming result. And, nothing at that middle high school field, even digging into the, to the hill where, where it was a lot of rock, was, was over a hundred. Uh, highest was eighty. So, and remember, when we tested the, the rock that came right out of the hill, it was twenty-five, nineteen, and twenty-two. So, I don't think there's anything that would make us think that any digging they're gonna do on the other side of the school near the, near the hill is gonna be exorbitant numbers. So, what I've learned in construction is that you always have to have a plan for dust mitigation. Standard operating procedure in any project, and that, what the guy from the state said, that I, at least how I interpret it is just do the project the way you do it, any other project, best practices. So, he, I think if he were asked directly the question, and I suggested, actually, that they ask Michelle to ask him, I mean, what, what's it gonna hurt, he'll, he'll give you his opinion. But, my understanding, so, but they need a vote, Courtney can't go to M S B A with a plan that calls for a health and safety plan if that isn't the will of the committee. So, that has to be resolved, so I think that's a, they're trying to get a quorum of one item, get it done, send it off.
Question on, continue, and it came up on one of our tours, and it was kind of a, a, a throwaway comment, but it, it stuck in my head. Because it's, the plan is to be done early, and we, they're gonna be handing over the building early, there's a question of we'd be assuming utilities and heat, whatever, is that, has that been figured out, for lack of a better word?
Well, right now, it's the responsibility of the contractor, until such time as they decide exactly when substantial completion is. They, they haven't said to the town, I mean, I brought it up twice in public meetings, they haven't said that the town needs to budget for that. So, my guess is they're gonna probably try to hold on to it for as long as they can, cause they've got some finished work to do. Um, but, if, if the town ends up taking it over, it's my understanding that the town has to pay to heat it and pay to light it, now, that's probably not a huge amount, because you're not gonna have people in it. So, you know, you just have to keep it warm enough so that your systems don't freeze, but you wouldn't have to keep the, you know, the lights on. Yeah, yeah, so I, I, I'm thinking that that's actually a minimal cost, if it happens that way. It is amazing, they probably have seventy to ninety people a day in that building, you know, uh, working on it. I mean, they're, they're, the flooring isn't down yet, the ceilings are dropped, they've got some new features that are in there, the tile looks like it's all done. Um, and actually, um, you probably won't remember, cause you've only been a couple times, or maybe you will, um, where the, where the grass roof is. There's that big, open space there, and one of the things Margaret's been really concerned about is that there's not really a spot for all of the staff to gather, unless you go to the library, or unless you go to the CAF. Because, remember, the decision was made to have teachers' rooms on each floor. So, they call that the treehouse, that's what the construction people call it, the treehouse. So, I said to Margaret, here, just make a solarium here, take that, it, take those furniture, that furniture from, from the Penbrook Library, that's beautiful furniture. Bring that library furniture, cause there's whole benches, it's beautiful wood benches there, it's beautiful light, and it's big enough if you put tables there. You know, just have that be your little solarium, so the kids could use it, class, whole class could go out there and use it, but when they're not using it, and you wanna have a school gathering, it's, it's not in the middle of everything, and it, I, so she's, she's thinking, oh, that's gonna be a, so that, that was the one thing that she just couldn't, like, like the thing that she couldn't really get excited about, that there wasn't a spot for everybody to come together, and that's really important in a school culture. You know, you don't always have to go to the library, you know, so, I think we're, that's, that was, that was a nice spot, yeah, so I said to her, I think this is like, she, oh my god, I hadn't thought of that. So, you know, I, I think we're making decisions on, about Penbrook, and I, I know that, you know, people are anxious, like, we wanna know, we wanna know. And, you know, I, I just want people to just, you know, understand, you know, we, we are working on all of it, we will get information out to people, and if we need people's input, we'll get it. But, there's just so many decisions to make, um, you know, we, and that's what, we'll give you an update at the next meeting on, you know, the status of the decisions we're working on right now, and what, where we are with them. So, you, you're protect, you know, you're aware, in case anybody asks you. You know, cause I know there's lots of questions out there.
Okay.
Good.
Uh, new business, we did the calendar, we have a few adoption.
Uh, do you have any adoptions, let's see, yeah, you do. Oh, yeah, these are the ones that are easy, the bidding requirements, that's the one you had, Joan, right?
That came from Laura.
I know, but where, where did it come from though?
No, it came from A, M A S.
Oh, these were in the, that newsletter, that needed to be done, right? So, this is a revision.
So, um.
You changed the threshold of the bidding.
To, from what, twenty-five to thirty-five?
So, the chair will entertain a motion to approve revised policy filed D J E bidding requirements as presented. Discussion, all in favor? And the chair will entertain a motion to approve revised policy filed D. That's not D J, that was, um.
Oh, that's the first reading.
I know, I don't know why it's in here.
Well, you know, I think that's in there because, oh, oh, you don't know why it's in here as a first reading?
Well, as an adoption. Uh, in my, in this note. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the adoption of revised policy filed K F and K R dash R, community use of school facilities as presented.
So moved.
Discussion, all in favor? And we just have a few, um, side letter of agreements, um, that were enclosed. Um, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the side letters of agreement for community service advisor, game club advisor, and current affairs club advisor.
Super fast question, like, just cause it, it interests me directly, what's the current affairs club?
That was one that was proposed by the kids, and I think they just, yeah, the game club was proposed by the kids too. Um, I think they just wanna get together and talk about, you know, things going on in the world, and, you know.
Is it open to adults?
I'm not sure the kids would like that, but.
Okay, discussion, all in favor? Hey, there is no need for an executive session this evening, so the, um, chair will entertain a motion to adjourn at ten thirty-five P M. Discussion, all in favor? Thank you, good night, happy holidays.